There's plenty of seats in the front here if and those that are standing in the back if they wish to come up and there's a few more up in here and some down here if you'd like to come down and get a seat. I think there's some over there, too. I'd like to call this meeting to order Monday, October the 26th. If the clerk would please take the role.
Councilmember Amos.
Present.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of October the 12th. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashford. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. Is there any additions, deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We have two presentations on the agenda this evening. If the clerk would please read the first.
Port Huron Minor Hockey Association will provide a brief review of their proposal for the McMorn Pavilion.
If the representative from Port Huron Hockey Association would like to come up to the podium, please. And if you'd like to give us your name also.
How you doing? My name's Eric Beauchamp.
And I'm Jim McPhee, President. On behalf of Minor Hockey, we appreciate the opportunity to make our presentation. And... All right. Little history of Port Huron. Port Huron Minor Hockey Association is a volunteer organization which has been operating youth hockey leagues at the McMorn Complex since it was built. PMHA or Port Huron Minor Hockey is the largest single customer of the McMorn facility in terms of annual rental income. In fact, Port Huron Minor Hockey was in existence before the ground was broke at McMorn. Port Huron Minor Hockey is one of the oldest youth hockey organizations in the state of Michigan and traces its roots to 1955. It is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization run by volunteers which provide nearly all services required. And it all started at the corner of 23 and White on a pond. PMHA, Port Huron Minor Hockey provides a wide variety of opportunities for children of all ages and abilities to participate in hockey. Our youngest players start at age three and continue through age 18. Port Huron Minor Hockey offers Learn to Skate, house leagues, and travel programs. Since 1961, Port Huron Minor Hockey has hosted the International Silver Stick Finals Tournament, bringing thousands of people each year to the area from places as far away as Alaska and California and all of North America and providences of Canada. The tournament has generated millions of tourism dollars for local businesses, including hotels and restaurants. The tournament generates annual revenues in the amount of $25,000 to Port Huron Minor Hockey and $24,000 to McMorn just for ice rental alone. That does not include the pro shop or any of the concessions. Benefits of hockey for youth. Hockey helps boys and girls make big strides on and off the ice. Here are just a few of the positive characteristics hockey helps bring out in kids. Teachers them pride, focus, friendship, strength, responsibility, confidence, teamwork, and leadership. Youth hockey is more than just a game. Hockey develops skills on the ice that build a foundation for a lifetime in addition to athletic proudness. Hockey promotes confidence, pride, focus, and responsibility with an emphasis on fun. Hockey is a game to be played and enjoyed for life. Youth hockey is often the start of friendships that can last a lifetime, starting with the bonds created in the locker room to the relationships formed on the ice. Hockey creates lifelong friendships. This camaraderie shared on and off the ice encourages teamwork and the natural development of leadership skills. Youth hockey can set up a child for success on and off the ice, from learning to balance school, responsibilities at home, time at the rink, and playing with friends. Hockey encourages kids to develop time management skills that will serve them later in all facets of life. Hockey's unique source of physical fitness promotes healthy living. Youth hockey is fun. The thrill of carrying the puck up the ice on a breakaway, the exhilaration of scoring your first goal or making that amazing save is possible due to the environment hockey provides, which encourages kids to try new things and grow as a hockey player and as a person. According to USA Hockey, there are a variety of benefits to youth ice hockey. Here are some of the testimonials from several former and current athletes who came to hockey their youth. And we had a video, but it isn't working. Why are we so successful? Did it start?
No.
All right. Why are we so successful? We have consistently had support from the community in the form of sponsorships and donations to assist the success of our programs. We have a nine-member Board of Directors supported by more than 50 volunteer coaches, managers, and instructors. Recent numbers have greatly increased at the youngest level due to our use of professional instructors and providing free equipment. Why are we so successful? The association works with the parents through programs like Try Hockey for Free, scholarships, and the use of free equipment for Learn to Skate and Learn to Play Hockey. We also organize numerous fundraisers to allow parents to earn credit toward their registration fees and encourage teams doing independent fundraising. Why are we here? Why does anything have to be done? Why does this have to be sold? Operational costs, necessary capital improvements? Operational costs. The entire McMorn Complex operates at a loss of $150,000 to $250,000. This is a small percentage of the city's $2.3 million recreation budget. The pavilion alone does not lose money. Necessary capital improvements. It has been said that the pavilion needs several million dollars in improvements and upgrades. This is simply not true. SMG reported that the pavilion only requires $252,000 over the next five years to maintain the facility as a hockey arena. What are the options? There have been two options explored. Option number one, give the pavilion to SC4 for a dollar. Option number two, sell the pavilion to Port Huron Minor Hockey for $100,000. Are there more options? The city continues to partner with Port Huron Minor Hockey. Port Huron Minor Hockey could play a larger role in its 60-year partnership with the city of Port Huron. The city continues to own and operate the pavilion, and Port Huron Minor Hockey agrees to fund the capital improvements and leverage its donor base for improvements to the entire McMorn Facility. Capital improvements. While there's been much public speculation about the capital improvements necessary to the pavilion, SMG recently published a five-year capital improvement plan calling for a total of $252,000 in improvements. Port Huron Minor Hockey has had the pavilion and its equipment inspected by local contractors to verify the condition and estimate costs for necessary improvements. Significantly, these contractors verified the ice compressors are old but in good working condition, and the building is ready for hockey with no immediate improvements necessary. These contractors also offered deep discounts, including free labor in some cases, to make the improvements for Port Huron Minor Hockey. In this way, Port Huron Minor Hockey has reduced the total cost of SMG's five-year capital improvement plan to $157,195. On approximately July 27, 2015, Port Huron Minor Hockey commenced a capital campaign to raise money for the necessary improvements. The potentials include but are not limited to 24 dasher boards and 24 legacy banners at $1,000 a year or $2,500 for three years, Zamboni advertisement, two sides, $3,000 a year, $5,000 for three years, logo painted on the ice, $7,500 a year, prominent perpetual building sponsor at $10,000. More than $45,000 in written pledges were received in the first week with projected pledges exceeding $75,000. In addition to contributions, Port Huron Minor Hockey has committed to allocating one-half of the net profits each year to put into the capital improvement fund, which projected totals will be $413,647. Possible option number four, Port Huron Minor Hockey and SC4 partner with the city of Port Huron to create a multi-use facility. This option will allow Port Huron Minor Hockey to remain tenants of the pavilion arena as well as allowing SC4 to use the facility for sporting tournaments and expos. Option five, give SC4 the west side of the North parking lot to build their gymnasium. Pavilion maintains its ice surface. In the initial letter of intent to purchase and ever since, Port Huron Minor Hockey has expressed an interest in exploring other options that would keep an ice service in the pavilion. No one from the authority, its consultant, this council, or its manager have considered or discussed these options.
Myths and Untruths. Dr. Pollack said Silver Stick played games in Sarnia last year. He said that on October 8th in a WPHM interview with Paul Miller. That is simply not true. The Port Huron Silver Stick Tournament has not played games in Sarnia since September 11th, 2001. Dr. Pollack said it would cost $100,000 to $200,000 to put ice in and remove the floor in an 8-7, 2015 Times Herald interview. Actual cost would be $3,000 to $5,000 per an arena manager. In fact, eight pro stadiums share hockey and basketball: Dallas, New York, Denver, LA, Boston, Chicago, Washington DC, and Philadelphia. Also, 33 other pro venues host either one's pro team and one college team in a different sport. James Fried said Sarnia Lampton has four sheets of ice and is going down to three on 10/21/2015 at a Chamber of Commerce presentation and Paul Miller show on 10/23/2015. They actually have 15 sheets within Sarnia-Lampton area. One in Sarnia, two at Clearwater, two at the RBC, one in Point Edward, two in Mottown, two in Forest, one in Petrolia, one in Elveston, two in Waupu, and one in Wallaceburg. Mark Neal said the number of participants in Minor Hockey is dropping, 10-7, 2015, WPHM Paul Miller interview. Bob Lefley also said the numbers are dropping in hockey, 10-7, 2015, McMorn Authority Board meeting. Our numbers are up year over year for the past three years, and our number of participants aged eight and under is over 110, and this is an increase of over 100% from the prior James Fried and Mark Neal have reportedly referenced a study that determines Port Huron area only needs three sheets of ice. When asked for a copy of such document, one document was provided, a facility study from 1999. This study indicated that 68% to 81% of all ice was being utilized. There is no mention regarding how many sheets of ice is necessary. This study is 17 years old. More hours of ice are used annually now than they were in James Fried said the intent of the original gift wasn't for hockey, 10/23, 2015, Paul Miller interview. Our question then becomes, when were the chillers, compressors, cooling, and miles of pipes under the cement installed? The answer is when it was designed and built. There's a picture of the actual blueprints, and that part that's highlighted or outlined in red says rink piping, rink pipe supports, and concrete piers furnished and installed by ice rink contractor. Dashboards, inserts, and net inserts will be furnished by the owner and installed by the ice rink contractor. I say all these things, I guess, not to discredit anybody, but just to say that, you know, there's a lot of people are talking about hockey, and we're the ones that live it every day. So when it comes to our numbers and things like that, I guess we'd appreciate if people would come to us with that information for those questions. Our numbers. Here's our numbers. This chart shows our numbers over the past three years. As you can see, we've steadily climbed. We've put some instructors in place, some programs in place, that have really helped the numbers grow quite a bit. Obviously, they're not where they were years ago, but you can see the trend is going up, and the economy's improving, and we are continuing to bring more kids into youth hockey. Current facility participants. Currently, in the SC4 gym, they have about 2,300 participants for the year, and in the pavilion sees 4,600 participants over the year. Number of hockey games in the pavilion versus games in SC4 gym. SC4 gym has about 18 basketball and volleyball games per year, while the current pavilion use allows for about 228 games per year. And that timeframe, it's only, it's November 16th through early March. With Port Huron Minor Hockey proposal, the number of games in the pavilion would grow to about 528. The home teams based in each facility. In SC4 gym, there are three home teams based in that facility: the men's basketball, the women's basketball, and the women's volleyball. In the pavilion currently as an ice facility, there are 32 teams that call that facility their home. The number of teams that participate in the sought-after Division II basketball tournament is 18, and this tournament has been hosted by Danville since 1994, which may prove to be difficult to land, in my opinion. 130 teams play at the established Silver Stick Tournament that Port Huron has hosted since 1964. The number of participants in the sought-after basketball tournament is about 300, while the number of participants in Silver Stick that come to the downtown pavilion each year is 1,800. You want to get that?
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah.
All right.
Just so you know, you're down to about the last two or three minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect, I think. The number of days. Basketball tournament runs five days, and the Silver Stick Tournament runs eight days in January, bringing more business and more dollars to downtown. The million spent by visitors for the basketball tournament is $1 million. According to their paper, I got the source up there at the top of the slide, and Port Huron area, they believe it gets about $3.25 million spent in downtown. This sheet represents ice usage currently in the facility. If our numbers continue to grow, as we have over the past two years, honestly, we believe we'll be needing more than what we have. They have the FHL team has ice, high school has lots of ice, lots of house teams, high school practices, men's leagues, drop-in, and at the rate that our numbers are growing with over 111 kids aged eight and under, that's 11 teams, 11 MIT teams next year. So... At this time, that's really all we have. I just want to... Oh, no, it's not. I lied. All right. In closing, Port Huron Minor Hockey is ready and willing and able to be part of the solution while maintaining the legacy of the McMorn family. We feel the city has not explored all options, and Port Huron Minor Hockey has never been to part of the conversation. No one has heard Port Huron Minor Hockey's side of this. No city representative nor consultant ever reached out to Port Huron Minor Hockey for discussion or problem solving. This 15 minutes is the only communication Port Huron Minor Hockey has been afforded since the presentation to the McMorn Authority Board. Lastly, there is no deadline timewise to do this. Where is the higherman exploring a relationship between the city and Port Huron Minor Hockey? After all the cards have been laid on the table, and after the best decision has been made based on all the relevant facts, once it's done, it's done. There's no going back. So I guess I kind of urge everybody to take time, stand back, let's look at everything, talk about everything, and go from there. There exists no present hardship on SC4. There seems to be a deliberate push to make this happen right away, and we only ask you that you explore all options, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
This was a time just to hear tonight, just to hear your presentation, and then the same with the college.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Presentation number two. If the clerk would please read it.
St. Clair County Community College will provide a brief review of their proposal for the McMorn Pavilion.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Kevin Pollack. I'm the president at SC4. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for having me here this evening to talk about this. I do not have a PowerPoint to show you. I'm just going to go over our presentation as it was presented to you originally, as it was presented to the McMorn Authority, and as it's been presented to other entities. First, a little background about us. We were founded in 1923. We serve students from age 13 to 86. We currently bring downtown 4,000 people three days a week. We have 3,800 students and over 200 employees. We bring people to the downtown area now. What I want to do is I want to go over the facts that also we have 1,000 high school students that are currently coming to our campus and taking classes. So we currently do work with a lot of youth in our area. Again, our youngest one is 13. Just the basics of our proposal. I'm not going to, I'm going to be brief because we do have a few people that will talk during the open session that'll give you more details on some specifics. We presented to you on June 12, 2015, our board presented to you a proposal, and I'm going to highlight that. This is the same proposal that was presented to the McMorn Authority, was also reiterated again last month in our October board meeting by our board to continue the process that we began. The college has a long and shared history of working with the downtown area. We also have a long history of getting things done in the community. You'll note that through the fact that we did our Greenway and our capital campaigns and the work that we've done for the museums and other things that we've done in this area. We're a collaborative group of people that work with a lot of different entities. Our basic pieces included the following. First, please understand that this discussion with McMorn has been an ongoing thing over the course of the six and a half years that I've been in the school as the president. It's been presented to us in various forms. It's been presented to us in various entities, and it's been presented to us by the McMorn Authority Board itself, who reached out to us two years ago and asked us to be a partner with them as they looked at repurposing their facilities. We couldn't do it at that time because there were a variety of reasons. The first was the fact that they wanted us to rent the facility. We did not, we could not, as a college entity, taxpayer-based entity, put resources into something the college does not own. So we weren't able to do something that way. The authority's own plan included $6 million in renovations for that facility to repurpose the pavilion. So please remember that as you keep that number in mind. Originally, we had talked about the purchase price, and again, yes, we looked at a purchase price of a dollar that was presented to us. The reason it was a dollar wasn't the fact that we were underlying anything else. What it was is the fact it would allow us more financial wherewithal to put money into the actual facility itself. So please remember that. Here's what we planned. We would relocate our student gym activities to the pavilion, which would allow the college to create space on the campus for future allied health science complex. This is part of a facility's master plan. By the way, a facility's master plan is something that, when it was presented to you last time, wasn't really shown in the correct sort of manner. A facility's master plan is a plan that looks at every and all possibility of things for your future use, which includes anything that could be there. So our facility's master plan is a long-term view of down the road. It includes a piece of McMorn, includes all of McMorn, it includes buildings to the north, it includes a rental facility, includes the fire station. The reason it includes all that is you have to look at every possibility and plan accordingly. Doesn't mean we want all that, and it doesn't mean we're trying to get all that. What it means is when you plan those pieces, you have to look at that. So if it does become available, which it had in the case of McMorn several times, we have to have at least a plan in place to decide what would we do or not do. That is a facility's master plan. It doesn't mean you're doing everything in the plan. It's the same as we have a deferred maintenance budget. It means you cannot do everything seen in that deferred maintenance budget. You pick and choose your projects as you can do them based on your finances. It's the same as you want in your house. You may want to add an addition, but if you have to fix your bathroom, you do that first. If you have to re-roof your house, you do that first. Those are some of the things that we take into play when we're looking at this. So we also wanted to provide a collegiate-level facility for competitions and additional opportunities to tie to our current facilities, which are not suitable to host larger-scale events. We also wanted to establish a campus field house for larger student-centered events such as college night, career plans, career fairs, robo frenzy, the STEM Institute Conference that was held again last week. All these can be expanded with a larger facility. In addition, we host a number of sports camps. We have to cap those because of the size of our facility. We want to talk about attracting youth in collegiate basketball, volleyball, and other area tournaments, and offer other activities that are not provided in the local area, as well as increasing collegiate sports-level camps. And again, we'll talk about some of those other pieces as you hear other people from our college present information to you. Finally, our budget estimation of the money that we would put in there was based on, an engineer going through that facility, was based on the McMorn Authority's own plans and the fact that we believe that there are going to be needed improvements beyond what has already been mentioned in the prior presentation to you. The college believes that we will be putting $2.7 to $3 million into that facility over the next three years. The initial one will be fixing the HVAC system that is in there. That's an estimated $1.5 to $2 million. On top of that, it will cost about $750,000 for us to repurpose the floors, put in new facilities, fix the bathrooms, clean and fix the locker rooms, upgrade the lighting, fix the HVAC, and continue with additional infrastructure repairs, for a total of somewhere between $2.7 to $3 million. These are based on our engineers' estimations to us. So this is where we're going to go with what we can do to the facility. We believe we can expand and add a lot of things to the community. We can bring in a lot of different groups to the downtown area. And again, we want to be collaborative, and I will address one piece. We did look at could we continue to have the ice facility there. The ice facility would be there the same time we would need it for basketball and volleyball. That's the first reason that we can't go forward with that. We also looked at the size and the fact that the cost that were there. So we did look at a variety of pieces. The information that was provided on the radio and others came from our own engineers. So I'm happy that you had me here to talk about this. I know we're going to have other groups that are going to spend a little more specifics on what kind of programs are we talking about, what kind of team events do we have, what kind of sports uses will we have, and additional pieces that are there. But thank you for the time.
Thank you. We'll move on now to public hearings, and if the clerk would please read the first one.
To hear comments on the application from U.S. Farithan LLC 2233 Petit Street to transfer the remaining four years of industrial facilities exemption certificate 2007-413 for real property from LDM Technologies Incorporated. Following the hearing, the council will consider approving the request.
Is there anyone in the audience this evening who wishes to speak to public hearing number one on U.S. Farithan? Seeing no one, I declare the hearing closed and ask for a motion to approve their application.
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Councilmember Amos, and supported by Councilmember Ashford. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor Steph. This is just the final step. We already did the preliminary, so the final step in this.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on now to public hearing number two.
To hear comments on the McMorn Pavilion purchase proposals received from the Port Huron Minor Hockey Association and St. Clair County Community College.
Before I open up the hearing to everybody, we have a lot of people in the audience tonight, so I guess I would just ask if you'd please be respectful and keep your time to the four minutes, which is what is allowed. I don't want to have to keep telling people to sit down, so if you kind of keep an eye on that. And please give us your name and where you live as far as your jurisdiction where you live, whether it be Port Huron, Marysville, or one of the townships. If you would give us that also. And if you'd refrain from applauding between each person who's speaking, because that just adds to the time if we have to kind of settle down in between. So we want everybody to make their comments and have their... So, we want everybody to make their comments and have that time, and I would like to see that be a respectful manner. So, in that, I will open it up, and whoever would like to, perhaps if you want to start lining up in one of the aisles there, I don't know, we could start on one side, but I don't want to leave anybody out, so whoever wants to get up first, feel free. Or nobody. And I know that's not going to happen.
George Moss, Port Huron. International Silver Stick Director. I just wanted to give a few numbers on the number of teams that we bring into Port Huron each year. It has roughly 136 teams. Basically, that's about 8,160 hotel nights that we're booking through Silver Stick, an average cost of $150. That equates to about $1.2 million in hotel sales for the local economy. Give or take a little there, I could be off a little, I'm not a tourist bureau expert. The other thing is, the money that people will be spending as they come into town would be roughly, based on them just spending $50 a day, that would be another $1.6 million. So a total of almost $3 million is brought in for those two weekends at Silver Stick and using both facilities in Port Huron. I do have to say that without Port Huron Minor Hockey, there is no Port Huron International Silver Stick Tournament. They are the sponsors of it. So if they lose the ice and eventually have to fold, Silver Stick will go right away with it, because they are the sponsors. It's not the city of Port Huron, it's Port Huron Minor Hockey. So, basically, there's about $3,000, or $3 million at a conservative estimate that comes in in two weekends to Port Huron. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Council Pete Lacy, I'm the vice president of Student Services at SC4, Birchville Township resident. I'd like to thank the council for your consideration of our potential acquisition of McMoRan Pavilion for our SC4 campus. You've heard the term collegiate experience, and I really think that our plans for that facility would greatly enhance the experience that we provide to the students and our community. Much of the literature in college success revolves around student engagement and connecting students to a college campus, and certainly, the facility plans that we have would help engage our student body. The college offers a variety of current events. Dr. Pollak referenced a few of those that we absolutely could expand and grow in the future. So when you hear things like our College Night, we bring in colleges and universities from around the state for students and families in our area to have that shopping experience. Last year, we hosted, in collaboration with the EDA, the first-ever Robo-Frenzy in St. Clair County. We were restricted to 12 teams for that event. A regional event would attract 40 teams, and we believe that we could do that in our county with 40 robotics STEM-focused teams here in town. The pavilion would also be a key area for us to continue the collaboration and focus our community partnerships. So, we are the home of the Port Huron Sports Hall of Fame. We would absolutely work with their board on relocating with us if they chose to do so. We also have a desire to build our own SC4 Sports Hall of Fame. We have a 90-year-plus-rich history of student sports success, and so we want to celebrate that as well for the community. And we also host a variety of events like art fairs, potter's markets, we've had some diversity, Black History Month events, where we've been restricted by the size of our facility that we could enhance that in the pavilion. I'd finally just like to remind you, when it comes to youth in the Blue Water area, you know, that is, that's the core of what the college does. We work with youth every day in everything that we do. So from the students that we have on our campus enrolled, but to the communities that we serve. We are an active partner with Know How To Go, and we do a lot of initiatives with the local school districts to try to help students find a career and move forward with their successful plans. We work closely to bring students to our campus. Every year, for the past five years, we brought 2,000 eighth-grade students to our campus. They tour the campus, they explore careers, work with our faculty and our staff. Just two weeks ago, we had 206 graders from Holland Woods on the campus, looking at careers in STEM, working with our faculty and staff. These are youth that are in our, in our community and on our campus. You're going to hear from Dale Voss some more specifics on the events and the number of activities that we offer and the youth that we serve in regards to athletics. I'd again just like to thank you for your consideration. We look forward to further collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Rep, council members. Nice to see some old friends on the end of the, my name is Dr. Dan Wilhelm, pediatrician, been practicing here in Port Huron since 1966. Personally, at one time, I was president of the Port Huron Minor Hockey Association. I was chairperson of the Silver Stick Committee for several years. I'm sitting here listening tonight, and what I don't understand is the discrepancy in numbers. Why is there such a difference in one proposal and such a difference in the other? I almost feel like I'm watching David and Goliath go at it here, you know? I guess I'm concerned that there's only two choices being presented. I don't think the community can afford to lose that ice surface. And why can't we find another alternative where the ice surface is retained, the college gets its gym, maybe everybody work together? What about the Art Van Building downtown? Is that possible to be used for something? I don't know, but I've never heard anybody talk about, is there another alternative? So, I guess what I'm asking is, let's try and keep the ice surface, let's see what we can do. The numbers, the past gentleman mentioned and so forth, those are wonderful. I believe in the community college, I think it's great, but let's not throw out the baby with the bathwater and get rid of the ice surface, when maybe we could find an alternative that would be greater for this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ed Marshall. I'm an attorney in town, and I own the Main Street Lodge and Suites, right across the street from McMoRan. I want to focus mostly on the Silver Stick Tournament. I believe that downtown Port Huron could again be vibrant center, business center, and that's why I invested over half million dollars renovating that building. And I can tell you frankly, if we lose Silver Sticks in the middle of winter, it's going to have a very detrimental effect on our operation to keep that running as a hotel. We're throwing a lot of figures around of how much Silver Sticks brings in, but I think the bigger picture is to realize that this is a national event which culminates in Port Huron. Everybody from around the country, this is the goal that they're trying to get to, to come to Port Huron for the finals. This is not something that we have any control of, over whether it stays here or not. I've talked to the people from Silver Sticks, and if they can't have two sheets of ice downtown, they're gone. There's already venues right now, other towns, that are anxious to get the finals of Silver Sticks, and they will get it and will lose it. And once it's gone, it's going to be gone for good. This is an event that brings in over $3.2 million over the course of two weekends, and that's not counting all the hotel revenue. What I would like you to think about is the fact that you've got people coming from around the country that would have no reason in the world to ever set foot in Port Huron, except for the fact that they're here with their kids in the Silver Stick finals. I don't know of a better way to introduce this community in this area to people that might invest here, might move here, than some type of event like this. So I would like you to think very hard before you give away that auditorium and we lose the Silver Sticks. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Highbore, and I live up in Lakeport. I'm really unaffiliated with any of these groups. My kids have played in minor hockey, they've also played in hockey down in Detroit, Lincoln Park, and other areas. I agree with what Ed just said about the Silver Stick. My son actually tried to qualify for it when he was playing out of town in Chicago, also in Midland, and you've got teams from all over the country. We've all gone to Silver Stick, there's teams from Alaska, there's teams from everywhere. And no offense to the college, you don't have too many Alaskan basketball teams coming in for a weekend tournament. The bottom line is, it sounds like this whole thing is about money. A dollar versus whatever. And the dollar gets you to be able to develop the waterfront, apparently, between the Fire Hall and the 10th Street Bridge. And the last time I saw the city charter, you can't sell any waterfront property without a vote. So I don't know how that's going to happen, and I'm not sure what you're going to put in there, but it's about money. Why are we having parks? Shut the parks down, go up to Lakeport, go up to Metcalf Road, because, why not? Let's get rid of those. What about the beach? We don't need the beach. We've got the lake out there. We have two city swimming pools. Why do we have those? Is it all about money, or is it something where somebody else wants to come in and expand? Somebody called feedback the other day and said, "I have no problem with the college expanding. I live north of Glenwood, come and condemn my property and take it." And instead, what's going to happen, and the master plan clearly says it, they want to take all of McMoRan, they want to take, I believe it's Peru Village, whatever that housing complex is, that's their master plan. And once you get your foot in the door, you're in the door. We've already lost parking downtown with the Bus Depot, and so the concept is, bring all these people in, and we're going to have more people to go to the stores. Of course, you can't park, you can't do this, you can't do any of it. The growth of the college is good, it may bring people into town. The college, of course, as the pavilion, will not pay any tax, because I believe the college does not pay tax on their property. And I'm actually a supporter of SC4's volleyball, I take a full-page ad out every year. One of the arguments was, we need to have the pavilion for the college so the kids can have the college experience. With all due respect, that's hogwash. You can have the college experience wherever you want. This isn't just about hockey. You have open skate. You have people taking their kids out to learn how to skate. You may have some older people my age learning how to skate, or things of that nature. It's not just about hockey, but let's assume it is. I agree with Ed. You don't have the two sheets, and somebody said, "Well, we can go down to Glacier Point." If the Silver Stick group actually looks at it, and I think we saw in the paper about four or five years ago, that they were looking of going somewhere else, go take a look at Glacier Point. Check out the locker rooms, check out the condition. And if I want to try to negotiate Silver Sticks going someplace else, it won't be tough, because if you start taking McMoRan, if you start taking these things, how do you give it back? It's gone, once it's gone. One of the arguments in the paper were the legacy costs. I can't believe there are that many workers for the city of Port Huron associated to the pavilion. If there are, why wasn't the money set aside for the legacy costs? Who dropped that ball? The actuarial who said how much to put aside for pensions? How much does the city make on the parade? I believe that's put on by the Rotary, which I've been told-
Highbore, Mr. Highbore, your four minutes is up.
That quick?
Please refrain from clapping, it just delays the whole process.
My name is Brandon McNamee, I live in Fort Grashit Township.
What was your first name?
Brandon McNamee, and my business is located in Port Huron. I graduated from Port Huron High School in 2001. I was one of seven kids in my class to go to the University of Michigan, and approximately 400 kids in my graduating class. I'm the only one from my college to come back to town, and I'm one of a handful of kids out of 400 back in town. And one of the reasons I came back to this area was because of the recreational opportunities. One, I love Port Huron golf. When I joined, I was the only member under 35 for five years. Two, I love playing recreation hockey. And in Port Huron, we have a unique opportunity that where someone my age, in their 30s or in their late 20s, doesn't have to play hockey at 11:30 at midnight, like my brother and all my colleagues know, all have to do in the Detroit area. So we don't have to play hockey at midnight, we can play at 7 o'clock and 6 o'clock, reasonable opportunities. One of the reasons I came back. Another reason I came back, I wanted to see my son play hockey in the same hockey organization that I played in. It's a great hockey organization. Now, what I see here, and this is my first really, I've ever been involved in this, I came here to the meeting, and it almost seems like we have volleyball and basketball students pitted against the hockey players. But I would, I would say it to my fellow athletes, if you've ever had to go to Glacier Point and shower in one of their locker rooms, even be remotely associated with that place, it's disgusting. It's absolutely disgusting. And volleyball players, basketball players, if you had to do it, you wouldn't go back. And I've worked too hard to go back to an establishment that, that has no pride in the way it takes care of itself. Fecal metal on the floors, in the bathrooms, toilets that have not, that have been clogged up and not have been changed, not for days, not for weeks, for a month. And stuff growing in the showers. Not going back there, my kids aren't going to play hockey there. So the fact that we have three valuable sheets of ice simply isn't true. I mean, we have two sheets of ice where a professional like me is going to play. I'm not going to go play at Glacier Point. So, I think some of these things have not come out, and they need to. I mean, this, this isn't about dollars and cents, this is about reasons people come back to the community, and the fact that we have a lot of, we're Port Huron, we have Silver Sticks. I mean, getting rid of Silver Sticks would like be starting the Port Huron to Mackinac race and just have it start in Lakeport. I mean, this is who we are, we're Port Huron, we're Silver Sticks. And you'll lose Silver Sticks. No one, I mean, we're talking AAA hockey teams, teams that cost 20, 30, $40,000 to be on the team. They're not going to go over to Glacier Point, Silver Sticks is going to leave. And I think we need to keep it. It isn't about dollars and cents, it's about opportunity and things we have here and recreational opportunities, and we should keep our hockey rinks open. Thank you.
This is David Ellingwood. I heard where I live mentioned, and I believe that we could actually coexist, and we could be like the donut hole in the master plan. And being that's a federal building, I, Peru, I don't see any danger of them being taken. But, I, I, the college does a lot of good stuff, though. I live right across the street from them, on Erie, Er, I think. Anyhow, I went to those college days and was actually a student for a day, one Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. My name is April. I live in the Port Huron Township, but I do work in-
Last name, April?
Both yams, sorry. But I do work in the city of Port Huron, and I just wanted to touch on a few things that have come into the news recently regarding both proposals, including radio interviews most recently, where Mr. Freed mentioned again that in the early years, how Silver Stick only needed two sheets of ice, and he doesn't understand why going back down to, you know, or going down to three sheets of ice is going to hurt anything. However, Silver Stick's grown exponentially in the last years, and thus, it's requiring the use of a lot more than two, or even four sheets of ice. Silver Stick actually uses two sheets of ice at Le Pier, as well as Macomb Arena. A total of eight sheets are used, including Glacier Point. Also, regarding the $100,000 offer from Port Huron Minor Hockey, I personally feel that Port Huron Minor Hockey should rescind that offer and use that money. As that same interview, James Freed stated, "It wasn't about the money, it's about what's best for the city." And I still believe that the Hockey Association is what's best, and I feel that they could use that additional $100,000 instead of giving it to the city and use it towards upgrades, maintenance costs, things of that nature, renovations. Also, on Saturday, the 24th, Times Herald reported that only about a third of the Blue Meets Green members even saw the presentation, of whom James Freed, Mayor Rep, and Dr. Pollak are members. A third of, a membership of 30 is 10, three of whom are making this decision. I feel that the council's already automatically going to back that, and Port Huron Minor Hockey Association wasn't even invited to make a presentation for the Blue Meets Green. Also, on June 14, 2015, in a Times Herald article, stated that only 2.5% of SC4 students even participate in their athletic programs. This is including baseball, golf, softball, men's and women's basketball, volleyball to about 100 students. However, when I checked the website rosters of SC4, it's only a total of 88. Port Huron Minor Hockey Association, however, has a membership of just under 300, much more than double, triple. SC4's tuition is about $6,300 a year for in-state residents, which is 93% more expensive than the national average for a public two-year tuition of $3,300. The cost is 17% more expensive than the average Michigan tuition of $5,300 for two-year colleges. As a matter of fact, SC4's tuition ranks 30th in Michigan amongst two-year colleges for affordability and is the- affordability and is the fifth most expensive, fifth most expensive two-year college in the entire state. Times Herald reported on May 24, 2015, that SC4's tuition increased 3%. Included in that article was that the trustees of SC4 decided to budget $20,000 for their board members' travel expenses, which is twice the allocated amount in previous years. They also voted 5 to 1 to double their Board of Trustees' professional development budget. The reason why I'm bringing all these numbers up are because this new Health Profession Center, the SC4 plans, is going to cost approximately $60 million per their master plan that I found on their website. And only a few short years ago, SC4 stated the need to conserve resources by shutting down their bad acc site. That was in 2011. However, the master plan states that the continued growth in health professions is driving changes in the curriculum, and in order to meet the needs in our region, SC4 wants to expand and support this growth, which is completely understandable. However, going back to the cost of tuition, the tuition increases, how much more is this new health services building going to cost us? And if they were so interested in building this health services department and thinking that this need is so great, why are we closing down other sites that had 30 students?
Your four minutes is up. Sorry.
I have.
Good evening. Dale Boss, I'm the Director of Advising and Athletics at SC4, and I'm a Port Huron resident. I just wanted to take a few minutes to give you a glimpse into what our athletics currently does and what we think could happen with the pavilion. We currently sponsor six sports. I think you've heard that a little bit tonight, but all six of those sports use the gymnasium. Basketball and volleyball are the only ones that play home games there, but if you know anything about spring in Michigan, baseball, softball, and golf need a place to practice in the snow. They use our gym. Our gym is used for between four and eight hours of practice every day from August 1 until April 1 of every year. We host a lot of contests, our men's and women's basketball and volleyball games. However, our gymnasium is not suitable for a lot of contests we'd like to host, such as volleyball tournaments. We host several events for area youth between our camps, our high school All-Star Games, our middle school basketball events. We serve over 2,000 Bluewater Area K-12 student athletes every year. Just this past weekend, we hosted the Bluewater Area Conference Middle School Girls Basketball Teams with just over 200 student athletes. We see the pavilion as a way to expand these offerings and to increase some other offerings. The pavilion would allow us to host college volleyball tournaments. These tournaments typically include eight to 12 teams. There are Friday-Saturday tournaments. They do include hotel rooms. They do include teams' buying meals in your community. Our team currently goes to Grand Rapids, Toledo, Cleveland, Muskegon for events like that. We could bring those folks here instead of us going to them. We would expand our middle school offerings. We would certainly include volleyball in those offerings to the middle schools. Additionally, we think we could expand it to some other leagues, maybe the Greater Thumb Conference, some conferences farther up in the thumb. Our men's and women's basketball teams host team camps during the summer where high school teams come in and play games. We have to use Marysville High School, Port Huron High School, Port Huron Northern as an additional facility for those. With the pavilion, we could do them all in one site. In the summer of 2015, we had to turn away youths from our summer camps because they were full. We couldn't hold any more people in our gym. With the pavilion, we could double or even triple the size of our camps. We see the possibility of hosting national championships, not just men's basketball in Danville, Illinois. The women's basketball championship has moved around every three years for the past 15 years. That tournament is very much up for grabs. The volleyball, women's volleyball tournament is up for grabs every three years. Those are events that last between four and eight days. Yes, the tournament itself is five days, but there's a day of practice, there's a banquet, there's other things like that going on in the community, and teams stay anywhere from four to eight days for those events. This process could also begin with us hosting what we call regional tournaments, which is the first step to the national tournament. Teams from Michigan, Ohio, and Indiana meeting at one site to get a winner that would then go on to the national tournament. Those are two- and three- and four-day tournaments where obviously folks are staying in the community. We believe we could host high school basketball and volleyball tournaments in that facility. We believe we could host holiday tournaments for basketball. We believe there's a chance we could host high school postseason tournaments. There's not a facility for regional basketball and volleyball tournaments, quarterfinal games. We think all of that are possibilities. We certainly could do more with youth sports. The youth in our community are traveling all over this state every weekend to play youth sports. I'm out of time, aren't I?
Yeah.[926.32][926.32][laughter]
We could bring those people here instead of us going there. Real quickly, we've got a whole bunch of our athletes here tonight, and I want to thank them for coming. Thank you.[935.32][935.32][applause]
Hello. I'm Maynard Little, 822 Port Huron. I'm up here, I'm against the college to get in the property. Because first thing they're going to ask for, two, maybe three mil tax to pay for. City's still paying for it. As long as that college is getting that tax out of us. So I go for the Hockey League for that reason. Because I don't think our tax dollars could be keeping being raised because the city wants some or the college wants some. So thank you, anyway.[976.32][976.32][applause]
Barry Lang, Fort Grashit Township. Thank you. I've got a double minor up there, that's all I got time for. It's the hockey terminology. Nothing?[993.82][993.82][laughter] All right. SC4 graduate. Go Skippers! Come on, what's up?
Excuse me. Mayor?
Yes, please keep it to the conversation.
Four-year SC4 alum, taking my two-year degree. It's done wonders. I've got a great job at AT&amp;T across the street that they're going to close here in the next couple of months, but you know, what's really cost me is the student loans and all the costs that come associated with college. SC4 I'm still paying for. Class of 2004, so I've got 11 years, I'm still paying on that. But what I'm not paying for is the Minor Hockey League Association, all the skills and assets that have come along with that. It's about the locker room. It's about camaraderie. It's about learning your brothers and sisters, about who you can trust and who you know when you go into the boards, who's got your back. SC4 hasn't got my back with student loans, money, career opportunities. Hockey does. Hockey's always there, always. No matter if you're in the playoffs, you're looking at a draft pick, the lessons you learn with a bunch of other men in a locker room, showering naked, is what will get you ahead in today's society more than a college degree. Mr. Prevost, my eighth-grade teacher. We watched the Oklahoma City bombing together. His son raps my beer hockey leagues.
Murderer.
There he is, right there. Scott Swiss. Worked with him with my college degree at AT&amp;T. We're better friends because of hockey than work, than college. It's not about where the sports are at. It's not about the college kids. It's about hockey. And this town used to host the Red Wings for training camp. Now we're going to replace that with volleyball and basketball. I've never once had to wait at a restaurant in Fort Grashit because of volleyball or basketball game. I have because of Silver Sticks.[1147.83][1147.83][applause]
Hi, I'm Mike Cogley. I'm from Port Huron. I really don't have a dog in this fight, but something made me want to come down here. I guess it's about principle to me. I was around when this auditorium was built. Some of you weren't born then, but this was a gift to the city of Port Huron from the McMorn family. And it was given for these kids in this town to be able to enjoy hockey. And I'm seeing something now that, to me, was always crude. Recently, we get into regifting, and I think that right now, the city is looking at regifting McMorn, the junior arena. And I just think it's wrong. I graduated from, I'm an alumnus from the community college. I'd love to see them expand, increase their programs, move north of Glenwood, get rid of some of that housing there, and expand that way. But I don't think they need to steal the gem that was given to this community by the McMorn family.
Good evening. My name is Don Fletcher. I'm retired CEO at Port Huron Hospital from Birchville Township. I also have the privilege of co-chairing Blue Meets Green. And I'd just like to provide you with a one-page summary.
Thank you.
I have one for each of the couple members. For those in the audience that would like to take a look, we have a website which describes Blue Meets Green. Basically, it's an alliance of 30-plus members, and we are involved in promoting economic development for the region, including Port Huron. We focus on people, place, and prosperity. In terms of people, it's developing workforce for jobs. It's implementing career and college readiness. It's maintaining and enhancing quality of life, quality of place, and diversifying the economy which will bring us prosperity. We had an opportunity, and contrary to what was recently reported, we had a meeting with the consultant. We, Blue Meets Green, was able to take a look at the presentation, both proposals. There were less, I think there were about 12 of us that were there, and, but I did have an opportunity to give every member that is a part of Blue Meets Green a copy of the presentation, so they all had a few days to look at that before they voted. I would like to say that overwhelmingly, there was not one negative vote, and they all supported the college proposal. The reasons that they supported the college proposal is they felt that the upside of that proposal had much more potential, short-term, long-term, than the Minor Hockey League proposal. And that was because of the investment that the college was going to make, up to $3 million in the short term, within the next year or so, toward upgrading the facility. It also had the long-range impact of three to five years of developing an allied health building. And in order to do that, they would demolish the existing gym and replace it with nearly a $16 million building. And as most of you know that are in the baby boomer category, there are, healthcare is a growth industry. So to have a facility on campus that would continue to educate and provide talent for allied health, that would be a great economic boost to this community. I might also say that I, hockey family, my two boys played hockey, Blue Meets Green is, supports hockey. They support the spirit and the culture of hockey. We also think that there is something to be said about the current athletes at the community college, the current programs that they would be bringing in, tournaments. Those would also enhance values as well. Blue Meets Green is willing to and-
Your four minutes is up.
Okay. All right. Thank you.[1483.51][1483.51][end of transcript]
Good evening. My name is Nicholas de Grazia. I live in North Lakeport. I'm the Chairman of the Board of Trustees at SC4. As you know, the Board of Trustees unanimously signed that letter of intent to pursue this project some months ago, and since then, has been in a major mode of due diligence, looking at this project from several different dimensions, not just what would we do with the pavilion, but how does the overall plan fit in with the strategic plan of the college going forward? As elected officials, we have a major fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the college has a future, and more importantly, that it is able to offer the academic programs and training that is so needed by members of the community, to provide programs that will provide very gainful employment for the people that have been born and raised in this community. At a time of declining enrollment, which we are suffering from at the moment, as are many other schools in the state, the trustees are always on the alert for what new programs can we be offering that would be of great benefit to our students? One of those programs is the large area of allied health. We do offer a limited selection of allied health programs. We could do a lot more, but it requires the facilities that Don just spoke of that we would have to have on the campus. The cost-effective method for creating such a facility would create an adjacent building to the current nursing program in the North Building. To do that, we would have to raise the gym. And that, of course, means, well, what would we do with athletics? To the trustees at the moment, all of these are issues that need to be considered with the mindset of the long-term healthcare of the college. There's no doubt the college means a great deal to this community and has done so for many, many years. Our primary focus at the moment is what do we believe is in the best interest of the students and the members of the community from an educational-academic perspective? And we believe the area of allied health, which has fine, fine employment opportunities, not only locally but throughout the country, could be a very shining point of our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kirk Kramer, Fort Grashit, Vice President for Administrative Services, St. Clair County Community College. Three keys to success. The college engages in long-range, integrated, collaborative, and coordinated planning. This isn't just about an athletics facility. It's about a long-range view of how the college can plan for the future, and that's what we engage in. Building and site funds are designated to match facilities to program, and we accomplish that by looking long-range to what is needed in the future. We plan ahead for that long-range view so that we can make long-range commitments. The master plan, as been referred to a couple times here, does include an assessment of contiguous property, but one needs to read further in that master plan to find the recommendations. And the recommendations do not include the entire McMorn complex. It only refers to the pavilion. Second key to success is best use of funds. The community college is a public body. It has elected public officials, and we are good stewards over the public funds that we have. And those funds are best used in a viable, long-term facility for athletics. Instead of investing in a facility that cannot be improved or cannot reach the potential that has been talked about today, those funds are better served, a better use of public funds in a facility that has that potential. The engineering estimates that we have is the basis of the dollars that have been quoted here. It includes an HVAC, heating/ventilation, air conditioning upgrade that is needed, lighting, correcting water infiltration issues, looking at the infrastructure from a long-term standpoint. It's not about athletics, it's also about a health sciences facility. And that is the long-range view of coordinated planning. Instead of just looking at one item, we look at how do these items relate to each other? And so looking at our site and how a health sciences- And so looking at our site and how a health sciences facility needs to be built, and what is the best use of those dollars? And it's possible for us to submit to the state for funding for a health sciences facility, not possible for a gymnasium, but possible for a health sciences facility, which again is indicative and is a good use of college planning to look at the long-term and how pieces fit together. From a financing standpoint, the college keeps tuition low, and in fact, we receive less, on average, per student for tuition than the average community college in Michigan. We operate on less tuition dollars than our comparable schools in Michigan. We operate on less state appropriation than comparable schools in Michigan. We operate on less property tax collection than our comparable schools in Michigan. And we do that because we are good stewards of the funds that we have. Third key is economic development. Investment in your community college, investment in a downtown to make it more vibrant, to continue to support downtown, and to help the entire region with healthcare training that is needed. So those three keys would help us be successful, help students succeed, help residents be successful.
Thank you.
John Prevost, I live in the city of Port Huron, forty-year-retired educator. I speak for young people. Several years ago, a previous city manager held forums within the city about how to take care of our budget. And one of the things that was brought up was to basically destroy the city recreation department, close the city pools, because it was an easy way to save some money. In his presentation, he mentioned five cities in the city, in the state of Michigan, and he compared their crime rates to Port Huron. And after he made that statement, I looked at him and I said, "Mr. Tomian, why would you do something to hinder the youth of this community by cutting the budget of the recreation department?" And I see we have our recreation director here, probably the best one in the state of Michigan now. Port Huron was the lowest with crime rate, because we do things for our young people in this community. The college is more adult. They bring in athletes, great, but they bring them in, most of them are from out of the area. We need programs such as the city recreation department, the Port Huron Minor Hockey that has been working with youth for fifty-some years. Those are the things we need in this community. Don't throw away something that we have had for so long, and I believe has also helped to keep crime rate among youth down in this city. Thank you.
Eric Parker, I'm with, from the city of Marysville, however, I work in the city of Port Huron. I've been a longtime member of the Port Huron Minor Hockey Association since I was about ten years old. I've been president of the Hockey Association and board member for over a decade, and also involved in the Silver Stick Tournament for well over thirty years. It's my belief that the city, over the course of the last several years, has been negligent of their duty when it comes to McMorn, and producing the funds necessary and finding the funds to support that facility. Number one, marketing. That building sits empty far too many days. How can a facility like the Little Lexington Theater up there fill that thing every weekend for dual shows and we can't put anything in our own auditorium, which is much nicer than that theater up there? Also, being involved in the Minor Hockey Association for so many years, I know how much money it takes to run a program. And without Silver Stick, which we'll leave if they don't have the facilities here to leave, Port Huron Minor Hockey and all hockey in this area will pretty much fold up, because that income that comes in from that Silver Stick Tournament supports the hockey program throughout the year. With that said, I think the college and the city need to get together, and the city can help the college purchase the property north of Glenwood and provide that state-of-the-art facility that they so desire, plus the health facility. And it makes a perfect sense to build that health facility with the expanding McLaren Hospitals site over there. With that said, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Allison Smith, and I live in the city of Port Huron. I didn't plan on coming to the council meeting. I got home from a long day of work, and my husband said, "Let's go, it'll be fun, it'll be like a date night." Sorry, John, in advance. So, as I listen to this, one of the things, I've always lived in the community, that we're always strong and rich on is the sense that we are a community. I am beyond embarrassed for the McMorn family for what is happening right now. Back in the 50s, there was a proposal to the city for them to do a facility, and it was voted down, not just by the leaders, but by us as a community. The McMorn family stepped up and donated this to us. So there should be really a way that we should come together, because like somebody said, it's about volleyball versus basketball versus hockey. At the end of the day, it's about our sense of community and the kids that we have here and the impact that we're making. So I'm also embarrassed that we would sell it to SC4 for a dollar, but you're going to allow the Port Huron Minor Hockey Association make a bid for a hundred thousand dollars out of minor association money, and they're going to put improvements in it? Talk about a sense of community? That speaks volumes to me. There has got to be a way for everybody to work together if we truly are a community, so that it's a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Jeff Bone, 3453 East China, Michigan. I'm the county board chairman here in St. Clair County. I've been on the board for eleven years. I also am a member of the CVB, and I sat on the McMorn Authority Board for a couple of years. I listened to the city presentation the other night, the college presentation, Blue Meets Green, and some of the other different meetings, and when I first heard some of the comments, these are just some of the things that I wanted to address. Some of the comments, does SC4 have the money to do the project? Carl Tomian, who sits on my board with me, is also on the foundation board. He assures me that there's ample funding in place to make this happen. The land swap deal, I love the land swap deal. The city already owns the property. The college, correct me if I'm wrong, has the first right of refusal, and through this, the college will be lifting the first right of refusal. So the city owns the property, the college does not own the property. Just some clarification for there. I've heard some of the things with planning. McMorn and the master plan, I can share you, I've been, you know, part of lots of different master planning exercises. Some of the things you do do, and I'll just reiterate what Kevin said, is you identify properties in and around your potential master plan, potential future developments. That doesn't mean you're going out to take those particular properties over, it's just a planning tool. So that is just a normal process that happens. Some of the things, Silver Sticks, fifty-three years in there, I don't, I'm not going to minimize the impact of Silver Sticks as far as two days in January, you can't argue how significant that is. One of the things that I do want to touch base on is we just recently received our 2015 six-month update on our convention center project, and the reason I point to that is for the different hoteliers that are in the room, and some of the people that are concerned about lost business, the convention center wasn't even online last year, okay? In 2016, we currently have over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on the books as far as book business, with another just short of seven-hundred thousand right now that's hanging out there, and a good chance you're going to get a good portion of that. Why I emphasize this is the potential for the convention center to make up for the lost impact of some of these other things that we'll have. It will exist. And when you talk about hotel rooms, there's only, there's under a thousand hotel rooms in all of St. Clair County, and when you look in Port Huron here, and it's roughly six hundred rooms, so by being able to hopefully bring in a couple substantial conventions, if the Silver Sticks, you know, did go in there, again, I don't want to minimize, you cannot argue how big that is for this area in January for those two weekends, but I just, I also don't want to underestimate how much potential business that the convention center has out there to help backfill for these individuals. Some of the new attractions, you know, I look at it kind of a thirty-thousand-mile. I'm not a hockey player, I go, I watch hockey, I can tell you, I've got two daughters, my girls play volleyball, softball, basketball, and we travel, we travel a lot. And when you, if you're able to house some of these other events, then are you able to, you know, bring additional things and stuff? You have a tough decision to make, I don't wish to be in your position, I gotta make enough tough ones on my own, but I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Isakowski, Kimball Township Supervisor, also the president of St. Clair County 4-H Fair. Not here representing either organization, by the way, just to be clear, so, but I feel for everyone here, council, for the very difficult decision that you make, your financial responsibilities, as well as resources to your community, it's very difficult. To those in the Port Huron Minor Hockey Association, obviously a very difficult situation. As a fair, we don't own our own property, so we are somewhat at the mercy of the county. We have, we have often thought what would happen and where we would go if Goodell's County Park was no longer available to us. I can tell you this, though, the St. Clair County 4-H Fair, 4-H program would continue on whether we had Goodell's County Park or not. I mean, I would hope that the Port Huron Minor Hockey Association would take that same stance, that they're going to continue to have the positive influence in this community regardless of what happens here moving forward. You're a great asset to the organization, I would hope that that would continue. Myself, I kind of look at it from a little bit different perspective. I have three daughters, none of them interested in hockey whatsoever. I did try to get my middle daughter to play football, did not work out. Obviously, I look at it from the, I believe it's the master plan or strategic plan for McMorn, and it says that the long-term sustainability of the Port Huron Pavilion requires that it be repurposed for long-term sustainability. I don't think either proposal actually gets to the point where that plan wanted it to be. However, the SC4 proposal is far closer to that plan than any, than any of the proposals that you have, including staying with the city. The, that proposal, that plan also calls for about six million dollars in investment in that facility. Again, neither, neither plan that's been presented tonight meets that six million dollars, but three million dollars is a whole lot closer. I get real concerned when I start hearing things like HVAC and the fact that that particular piece alone could potentially cost well over a million, and the amount of investment from the Minor Hockey Association didn't quite come to that. I would also be concerned, and we have, I'm involved with a lot of volunteer organizations, we talk about volunteers from a, from a government standpoint, in emergency management, we're seeing a decline in the number of volunteers. 4-H, I'm so proud of our volunteers, but the reality is to rely on volunteers to run a facility, I, to me, from a long-term standpoint, doesn't make a lot of sense. And so SC4 would be dedicating some staff that would be in that facility. To me, that's a better long-range goal. Do I want to see Silver Sticks leave? Absolutely not. I think Silver Sticks, Port Huron and Mackinac are some of the things that attracted me to this community and this area, and I would hate to see Silver Sticks lose, but if I'm Port Huron Minor Hockey Association, regardless of what happens, I'm putting a plan together, a proposal together, to make sure that Silver Stick stays here, and doing everything that I can. But when I look at it from my perspective, I think the SC4 proposal is the one. Thank you.
Can you, because you've already given a presentation, can you let the rest of the audience speak first? I'll let you speak again, but normally we don't have a person come up twice on the same subject.
I thought, you know, this is the other part of-
It is, but you did have a chance to present on the Hockey Association, so if you could let the rest of the audience first, then you can come back up again. Okay?
Dick Cumming, the Voca Michigan. I don't have a dog in the hunt on this issue, however, after hearing presentations from both sides, I do think there's some compromise ways to maybe deal with the issues. However, I do have skin in the game. Back in the days of Morris Snyder and Ernie Dear, when Ernie was the president of college, I said, "Ernie, I need a favor." He said, "What do you need?" "Kevin, this is why your grass is so green at the M-Tech Center." I said, "I need a hundred loads of dirt." This is before the M-Tech Center was built. I've always been a proponent of supporting the McMorn Auditorium and the complex, because I think it's being underutilized. So what we did, in conjunction with the Blue Water Festival back in them days, we put on a professional rodeo. This is what's kind of getting me with some of these events here. Took the ice out, put the, put the boards down, put a hundred loads of dirt in there, put the plastic underneath that, and I leased the McMorn Main Hockey Arena for a week. You know, when you work for nothing, you work harder, okay? We put a hundred loads of dirt in there, paid the bills, but the mistake we made was timing, because we had the same time as the Blue Water Festival. So families had a choice, do we take my kids to the rodeo or do we go to the carnival? So we lost our ask big time. In fact, it cost me personally fifteen thousand dollars. So I have a little skin in the game, okay? So I think there's ways of utilizing both arenas the way it should be and working out a compromise with the college where they could rent the particular space they need for the current times. And so the only reason I'm talking is I think that the place is underutilized, and it could be used a hell of a lot better for a lot more events, and I agree with the previous speaker over here that said that. That's the only reason I'm up here, I wasn't going to take a position, but this is not what my other positions are, this is my personal opinion, so I hope it works out whichever way it goes. Now, you've got a tough decision. Maybe another answer is when the dust is all cleared, maybe this issue should be put up to vote in the public. I know how pissed off the community was about that convention center, because nobody got a vote on it. So if this issue seems to be divided down the line with the community today, and both sides important, maybe we need to put out there what should be to the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Hale Walker, and I live in St. Clair and work in Port Huron. My brother Mark and I own Michigan Mutual. And I just wanted to give just a bit of a different perspective here. I have great love for minor hockey, and I don't think it has to be opposing sides, but I, I wanted to present, I think many of you know that Mark and I bought the Times-Herald Building with the hope of bringing jobs into this area, and more jobs. And I think it's the one thing everybody in this room can agree on, is the need for jobs in St. Clair County. And that is the reason that I'm, I'm supporting St. Clair County Community College. I think because we have had the community college in our community for such a long period of time, we sometimes underestimate the value that that brings. This plan for the community college is not only educating our young people and giving us a talent pool of educated young people, but they are also trying with the, with this partnership to be able to take their students and keep those students at St. Clair County Community College, so for reasons of sports, they don't have to go elsewhere. I can tell you, we've, the, one of the most senior executives in our company, Bruce Clark, runs our IT department. Bruce, just six weeks ago, made this decision and moved to Port Huron. And so firsthand, you'll, you'll find it interesting when I asked Bruce what it was. I think both sides of this argument should be very proud of themselves, because he thought it was that, that sense of community in this area, and it was the things that we together have done with the River Walk, with the convention center, the Doubletree, Baker College, and what's going on with the Middle College. He saw those things that are going on, and decided this is a place that he wants to live. So with that said, that's really the passion that I have, is to grow jobs any way we can, and as difficult as this decision is going to be for you, and as difficult it may be for the Minor Hockey Association, I think it's critical that we keep our eye on that ball and try to create jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, councilman, Mayor Repp, Mr. Free. I'm certain that most of you have seen me sitting here in the previous weeks, and based on my facial expressions and maybe body language, you may have assumed that I've taken sides, and
Could I have a name?
May assume that I'm disgusted with
Your name first.
Oh, I'm very sorry. Francis Hoffman III, resident of Greenwood Township, owner of, well, my brother and I own the Riviera Theater, two blocks west of here. Currently renovating and restoring, and hope to bring quite the attraction to Port Huron, and that it would be an event venue. And I'm not a rich investor, like some of the others that have come to the area and decided to plot down, and, you know, you know, I'm a resident of Port Huron my entire life, it's only the last four years I've lived outside of the city limits. I love this city, okay, and I have a tremendous amount of, I shouldn't be this nervous, I've sat here for many weeks, and, you know.
Speaking of everyone naked.
Yeah, there you go. But anyhow, the fact of the matter is, we all support the expansion, growth, and sustainability of SC4. Every one of us. There's nobody in here that would stand up and say that they do not support the growth of SC4. I guess what comes to mind here is heritage and history of Port Huron, you know? This has always been a hockey town, okay, and I'm, and I do not let my history as a hockey player give me any bias here. I mean, this is, you know, while I have a great amount of gratitude for the Port Huron Minor Hockey Association for helping me develop my own skills, and just, it's a great organization, volunteer-run, you know, they, they try very hard, you know, and they make a big difference in this community. I mean, this is a hockey town, always has been. The big issue here, I guess, you know, is what we're witnessing right now is, is not as recent as the first article in the Times about, you know, the college making the offer. This is the culmination of many, many years of chronic mismanagement at McMorn, I believe somewhat deliberately, and that this, this plan, you know, is, you know, you're a college campus, you're, you're, you're growing, you know, you've got your eye, like they said, on, on your neighboring properties, you need to be ready for, for growth, okay? And it's not as though they have not been eyeing up McMorn for many years, okay? The fact of the matter is, when we lose Silver Sticks, I mean, we come into town, and on the sign that says, "Welcome to Port Huron, home of Silver Sticks International Hockey Tournament," you know, it's, it's part of this town, it's, it's woven into the fabric of Port Huron, you know? You can't undermine that, I mean, it's, you can't abandon it. It's, it's so important to the city, you know, and, and that in itself. And then, I guess where I really take issue here, is that we have completely turned a cold shoulder to two organizations in the city that have brought many millions of dollars, made a great difference in our youth, okay, and for what, you know? So the college can expand? Bring an architect on, let them do an evaluation of the site, okay? You can build up, you can go north, there's plenty of room for expansion to build the facility with that sort of money, $16 million. You can do a lot with that. They still have last resort refusal to the riverfront property. I'd love to know what the plans for that riverfront property are, because it seemed to be a driving force behind this whole deal, okay? I'm not here to rub anybody the wrong way, okay? I realize that by standing in front of you, I'm not doing myself a service, and I'm a local business owner, and I, I want to be friend you all, but the fact is, we cannot lose Silver Sticks, and we cannot lose the Port Huron Minor Hockey Association. So let's work together with everybody involved
Your time is up.
And work it out.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michelle Vianboskirk, and I'm from North Street, and I didn't plan on getting up to speak today, I just wanted to come here and support for Port Huron Minor Hockey Association and Silver Stick combined. I feel, by listening to so much tonight, that this is a competition, that the city is creating, and it shouldn't be a competition. I am an alumni of SC4, and I think they have a great college, and they have a great program. I'm also been on the board of Port Huron Minor Hockey Association and Silver Stick for years and years, more than I care to disclose. My boys both attended SC4, and they both played all minor hockey through Port Huron Minor Hockey Association. My son is actually out in Colorado right now, playing junior hockey, and he never left Port Huron. He didn't go to Detroit, he didn't go to Chicago, he played here all his years, and he's now playing in Colorado. SC4 will continue regardless. We hear a lot about academics tonight, we hear about the big plan, the big process, which is great, that is necessary and it is needed. However, the plan for us, for Port Huron Minor Hockey, if that building goes away, we're done. We are done. We can land in one little facility, our numbers will shrink, we will lose Silver Stick. You guys, this is not an exaggeration, it'll be gone, period. We cannot survive like that. SC4 will find another piece of property and build their facility. They have the means, they have the ability. We don't, that's it. If we lose this, we're done. They continue, they will, their academics doesn't change, period. We're talking about athletics, and it affects both facilities, but it affects our kids more, because we're done, they're not. Our, where are our kids from Port Huron Minor Hockey going to go? They don't, we're, we're just going to shove all these kids aside? One facility, one she-devise does not have enough room for everything that goes on there. Port Huron Minor Hockey, and actually Silver Stick, has put Port Huron on the map. As someone has said, when you drive into the city, welcome to the home of Silver Stick. Are we no longer going to be that? Because that's what's going to happen. Is that what we're going to tell people? And someone else also mentioned, visitors that come for this come for no other reason, they're not going to come to Port Huron for any other reason. However, once they're here, and we show them a good time, and what we have to offer, they may want to come back, they may want a vacation here, they want, may want to move here, bring a building, or a business here, we don't know. These are all opportunities that are possible. And someone also mentioned that Port Huron Minor Hockey is all volunteers, and that makes them nervous. We've been all volunteers for over 50 years, and that's not going to change. The desire and the love for this program is not going to change, and that's why everyone is so emotional over this whole thing. And I don't, again, like the fact that we feel this is a competition, the Hockey Association versus SC4. The three programs, the city, the college, and the hockey need to get together and discuss this, something that is suitable for everyone involved, not one or the other, but everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening, council. My name is Kimberly Wedge Trumbath, I live in Birchville Township. I'm here tonight with my 81-year-old father. He will be celebrating his 50th volunteer year with Silver Stick come January. Hockey in this town is wonderful. Hockey makes these kids want to get up in the morning and practice and play their hearts out. I had the privilege tonight, at 5 o'clock today at McMorn Main, watching my grandson, seven years old, play his first hockey game. This is something he might not be able to do next year. If we lose Silver Stick, we have family members that come in from South Carolina, particularly for these two weeks. They make plans, they come, they spend money in Port Huron. Again, no problem with SC4, but they have a lot of money. They can go to the north side. Port Huron Minor Hockey cannot, does not have the money that SC4 does. Port Huron Minor Hockey can be run by volunteers, as it's been shown for over 50 years. I oppose giving away the pavilion to SC4. Thank you.
Sharon Bender, I am a resident of Port Huron, I live on South Boulevard, and I am back to, I was here at the beginning when this started, and I asked at that time what you were going to do to work with both entities, to come up with a solution. We have a wonderful community foundation, we have blue and green, we have, blue meets green, excuse me, done, we have all of these volunteers, something could be done, something can be done, so that everyone comes out smiling. Glacier Point is disgusting, they said, well, I'll tell them about disgusting. I have cleaned the toilets at Pine Grove Park for the Feast of the Saint Clair. You can, you can vouch for me on that. We, if we have volunteers, and the place is nasty, why can't we clean that up? Why can't we do something? Why can't we all work together? Why can't Parks and Rec from Saint Clair County put some money toward doing something? Whether it's, as Mr., as Dr. Wilhelm said, with the Arcman Building or something. We are stalling here, people, we need to all work together. This can come out so that everybody will be able to do what they need to do. It's time that we got busy.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Farquhar, I live in the city of Port Huron, and I am a lifelong member of Port Huron Minor Hockey. I started in Port Huron Minor Hockey at the age of three, even though my skates first graced the ice of the Pavilion Arena at 18 months old. I would like that opportunity for my daughter, for my unborn son, that I hope to have one day. I believe the McMorn family gave this piece of property and this facility to the youth of Port Huron for the use of hockey. As everybody said, SC4 has the finances to build a new building, and that's their plan, to build a new building. Port Huron Minor Hockey doesn't have the facility, or the finances to build a new building. As far as Glacier Point's concerned, I, it's not in the city, first off. McMorn is the backbone to Port Huron Minor Hockey, not Glacier Point. For personal reasons, I do not take my business to Glacier Point. If my men's league team skates at Glacier Point, I do not go. And that's per management decisions and, and just, just the way it's run. That facility is less than, it's right around 20 years old, I'm not sure, and if McMorn's 50 years old, I would say that the conditions of Glacier Point are 10 times worse than McMorn, and that's a public, or that's a privately-run facility. If you take and give away the pavilion to SC4, you're breaking the backbone of Port Huron Minor Hockey. And as much as I'd like to say that Port Huron Minor Hockey is going to be able to stand, and I would like to see it stand even without the pavilion, it's just probably not a viable option. You people sitting in front of me have the opportunity to make my hopes and dreams come true for my children, and, or destroy them. And the decision's yours, I guess, but when you, when you look at it, SC4 has the finances and the ability to move elsewhere, and Port Huron Minor Hockey doesn't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Monica McCurial, Port Huron Township. I hate hockey, I've always hated hockey. Jury's out on how I feel about kids. Kidding. My problem with this whole thing is how often the story has changed. Originally, when it first became public, McMorn Authority came out and they whined, because they weren't part of the discussion, they weren't invited to the table. In fact, in the June 11th edition of the Times Herald, Mark Neal said that he appreciated that the city was having this negotiation, but he thought that the authority should be part of it, and they should be invited. Then a few weeks ago, I heard from their consultant that this was their master plan. It was always part of their plan. They were the ones who had brought this to the council, or to the college, though the college has said it's been going on for over six years. So those two stories didn't work out together, and now we're talking about it being financially better for the college to take it versus the Port Huron Hockey Association, and nobody's told me what the worth of the pavilion is. When was the last time we had an assessment on that? What would it be worth on the open market? And if we don't know that, how can we make a decision that this is the best deal possible? If we don't know how much it's worth, what it could go for, and a dollar, I'm pretty sure we could do a little better than that. The property alone would be worth more than that. And I understand there's a worth to getting back, that first right of refusal, Mr. Lewandowski, Councilmember Lewandowski, tried to do that several years ago, when they were doing the vacating of River Street property for the green space. He was shot down then. It didn't seem to be important to get it back then, but now it is. So again, the story's changing a little bit for me. And that's why you're seeing so much confusion from your community, so much anger or resentment from the community. If the story stays the same, we can all understand it, but when the story changes, when we don't know what the worth of the property is, or what the plan is later, we don't, we stop trusting you. And that's the problem. This council, or in this room, back when this first started, there was a statement made, that if this doesn't go through with the college, that the entirety of McMorn was going to be shuttered. That wasn't exactly the best way to get your community on board. If the entirety of McMorn is going to be shuttered because there was not good financial decisions made by the McMorn Authority, which is basically what we were, what was suggested, though two weeks ago, according to, again, those gentlemen who put out the presentation, they are doing such a fabulous job, and McMorn Authority, and McMorn is doing really good, and their losses are much less than other facilities like them in other parks that are publicly owned like this one is. I don't understand how we can't get one story, how we can't get one series of facts in that they stay that way. I don't understand why you can't tell the community what the plan is, without it going from one side to the other, it was McMorn's plan, it was the college's plan, it was the city's plan. Come up with one, and I'll back you up. Thank you.
I'm Michelle Bernard, and I live in Port Huron, and I have a business in Port Huron. And I truly love the college, and I, I love hockey, we are a hockey town, and it is true, it is what we are, what we say on our signs when you come in, and, and it brings in a lot of money. What I'm disappointed in is, as a community, people can't vote. It's up to you guys. And it's a heady responsibility, because you really haven't given the hockey people much of a, a say in this. It's kind of been a back-room thing in a way, and it's not that we don't want the college to grow, but they do have money to go elsewhere, and that is an important facility, and I really think you should run it a little bit better, that it should make money, because it could, I see Lexington, I go up to Lexington, they have wonderful venues in a very small place. Why can't we have that? Why can't we have that? Why can't we have hockey? People support it. It's always been supported here. Why are we going in this direction without at least some input from the community? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Dora Crumaniger. I'm here from Port Huron.
What was your name again? I'm sorry.
Dora Crumaniger. And I really didn't want to come and talk or anything, but just I wanted to listen to what everybody had to say. And you know what? Listening to everybody, come on. How can Port Huron take Silver Sticks away? I mean, just listening to this. I was looking forward to having my grandson play next year, and then just wanting to come and see all the faces and everybody, and kind of get to know everybody, one on one, who opposed it, and who was against it, and who's going to leave it here. Because, come on, Port Huron, we really don't have much, and if you take Silver Sticks away, what will we have? Even though I met my buddy back there, the assistant coach for SC4, and you know what? He's from Detroit. He stayed here in Port Huron. He's coaching. So SC4, we are bringing something. But don't take anything away from our kids. Our kids can't lose anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under public order?
My name is Betty Prevost, and I am a hockey mom many years ago, but now I'm a hockey mom of a senior player. But hockey's been pretty much our life. We've traveled hockey for years and years. I've seen many a young man being built with great character due to hockey. As soccer, basketball, baseball, it's something that's important for kids, and Port Huron has had a lot of hockey players go through here. I think we need it for our kids. Most of all, I think we need it for our city. My husband and I drove around and we found one sign, and it said, "Port Huron, the home of Silver Stick Hockey." We're going to put anything else in front of that sign? You know, when that's gone. Hockey's important. We've built some great young men here with hockey. We've built families based on hockey. We did travel hockey for years. We've been in more places in the country, opened the world for all of our kids, not just our hockey player. There's more to it than just an arena and boys playing hockey. It's a great impact for kids growing up, becoming good, strong adults. We have a son who played hockey and went right through the high school, and I know other people in this room that have had the same thing. Character built in those kids that nothing else could ever teach kids. Parents try hard to give kids character. Hockey gives them character, gives them will, gives them strength, and makes lifelong friends. Our son has more friends than I could even count high as a math teacher, and many of them, almost all of them are hockey. And I'll tell you, the bonds with those kids, nothing else can form it. I mean, I'm sure most of these people are hockey people, and their kids have made good friends, good, solid, strong friends, families. There's more to hockey than just that arena and the game. There's a lot more that we can give to kids. I know teachers try to do it, parents try to do it, counselors try to do it, but hockey will build a man, and they'll do it well, and they'll make lifelong friends, and it's been a part of Port Huron. And I think the McMoRan people offer that to us, and I think we should go with their legacy too. But please, really think your decision. Think of your impact on all of these people, their kids, that many of the hockey kids are probably home doing their homework and going to go to school, you know, but they're not here. But there's a lot of people, and the last time you had the meeting, there were even more people here too. It's not easy to always come to meetings, but please, really rethink your decision-making and know what you're doing best for Port Huron. SC4, I went to Michigan State, and I walked miles to get to a class. You can go down River Street, you can get other buildings, there's lots of room in Port Huron, lots of empty space. So maybe you better leave the hockey arena to build good, strong men to go to SC4.
Thank you.
My name is Kelly Parker, and I live in Marysville. I am a volunteer for Silver Sticks. I have lived in many areas, and when I moved to this area, it was very, very clear that this is a hockey area. My children attended SC4. I have relatives that actually teach in the health profession at SC4. SC4 is very important to this community. But you can't take from one department or one area of this community for the betterment of another area of this community. We are community, and all of you up there are the guardians. We have voted for you and trusted you with this job and the future of our area. I work at Silver Sticks. I sit at a table. I'm often the first person that they have contact with when they come in the door, asking where do they go. They ask me, where do they, where can they eat? I talk to them, find out where they're staying. A lot of them are staying out of town because they can't get a hotel room, because we filled all of them in the area. They're staying in Mary's, Mount Clements, Roseville, and driving in their teams to play because they can't get a room in town. We fill all the hotels. They ask me, where can they get a newspaper? Where's the ATM? Where's the restaurant? They come and utilize everything there is in our community. They come from all over. I've seen kids come in from Hawaii that have seen their first snow in shorts and flip-flops in Port Huron. And I've seen people that have come back in the summertime because of what they have experienced, and they want to know what's going on in the area, and what else, and you have a giant sailboat race, and you have this, and you have that. We cannot lose. We have to find something that is going to work out for the college that is very important in this area, but we can't lose the hockey. It's the defecation, it is the roots of this area, and it's so very and very important. The, I don't have, my son did not play hockey. I was not a hockey mom. I came in later as a volunteer because it's such an important, important event, Silver Sticks. And it's not, when you say two weekends, it's not just two days, it's four days, two weekends, and it brings in so much for this area, and it belittles it when you just say two weekends, because it, so much goes into it for a whole year of planning. We start planning one before the event takes place for the next year. It is something too big and too important to be swept aside. We have to find something that's going to work for everybody. We both have valued reasons, the college, hockey, Silver Sticks. They're all so important. We have to find something that's going to work for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Taylor. I live here in Port Huron, own Fuelwood Fire Grill on Huron Avenue. I guess I hadn't planned to come here and speak tonight either. I think a couple of things that have been brought up earlier, you know, kind of motivated me to at least give you a business owner's take. You know, I told you the last meeting when I came up here to talk, I don't envy you. This is a horribly difficult decision. This facility has been part of this community for well over 50 years, and this situation is about 45 years in the making, if you ask me. It's a terrible, terrible choice to try and choose between a youth sports organization and a community college. Both have immense benefit to the downtown community. You know, as many others have said, I don't really have a dog in the hunt. You know, I didn't grow up here playing hockey, and I certainly didn't attend the college. But I do own a business downtown, and I am looking at opening a second business downtown. And I guess that gives me a few thoughts. You know, Mr. Bohm made a great point about the convention center and its progress and the wonderful things that it can bring as far as replacing revenue if, for whatever reason, we were going to have to say goodbye to youth hockey or Silver Sticks. As respectfully as I can, I have to point out that I don't think we're, and by we're, I mean the business community in this town, are in any place to start talking about replacing business. I think if I can offer the perspective is, you know, I think the majority of us who operate businesses in downtown Port Huron are getting by, that my status as a business owner is not an indication of my immense wealth, that it's, I had something that I believed in, I wanted to do it, and I'm making enough money to currently pay my bills today. But if asked to make a choice, my choice is, we should figure out how to let the college grow and still support youth hockey in this community, because I need both of them to grow my business. That being said, I still haven't offered you any clarity whatsoever in how to vote on the situation. But I guess what I would say is, if the vote is the best thing for everyone involved is for the college proposal to go through, that it should be done with the attitude of, we are committed and going to do everything we can to keep both Silver Sticks and youth hockey as a part of this community. And vice versa, if the decision is, the best thing is to go with the hockey proposal or nothing at all, it should be done with how do we support the college and their expansion goals. And many others have said it tonight, and I know that a city council or a city administration, you know, can't pull money out of thin air and build a new hockey arena or build a new gymnasium. But there are things we can do in working with the partners in the county and the neighboring townships and communities to at least try to be the catalyst for that development. So from the downtown business community, I sympathize with you. There's a reason that you're sitting there and I'm not. I don't envy your decision, but I guess for all I can say is, whichever way the vote goes, you know, please do whatever you can to try and maintain both of these entities that both bring people from outside of our communities to frequent businesses like mine. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Kraft. I'm from Port Huron. I'm a former SC4 student and not a hockey fan, which is odd because my boyfriend's generations-deep in Port Huron hockey. And getting to know him, getting to know his family's love of Port Huron hockey has really opened my eyes. I've waitressed in this town for many years, and in the wintertimes, Silver Sticks was the only thing that paid my bills. I'm sure that restaurant owners understand that, and other waitresses in town understand that. In the dead of winter, there's nothing else. I highly doubt that SC4 is going to be able to bring that same business that they're not already bringing. They have that already here. They're already established here. They're not going away, and they can do something else. Silver Sticks can't do something else. Thank you.
Born and raised in Port Huron, resident of St. Ignis, Michigan for the past eight years. My story is a story of passion, if anybody can withstand another story of hockey. Met and married a man right here from Port Huron years ago who was passionate about hockey all of his life. We had kids, two sons, that at the age of 10 years, my oldest son decided he wanted to play hockey. So he's starting out with kids that have already had a few years on them, and to say that he was one of the lower players of the team, he might swap me afterwards for this spot, that's where he was. But his passion for the game was huge. He gave it 110%. Younger son come up, he went to hockey here in town also. My oldest son met his wife, got married. They have two sons who play hockey here in town. They volunteer for everything at the arena. My son, it was something that kept him going all these years. He's very passionate about it. He sits on the board for Port Huron Minor Area Hockey Association. He's the VP. He's also, last year, for the first time, even though every year Silver Stick was in town, we took the boys to Silver Stick. We would sit there from noon to midnight, watching these kids come and play from all over kingdom come. When my boys were young, we housed kids from Colorado. We housed kids from Susie, Marie, Ontario. Imagine sending your kid to somebody's house? No. But it was such a wonderful experience. Now, last year, for the first time, even though they've gone, they brought their boys up, and going to Silver Stick every year, year after year. He was actually on the board for Silver Stick last year, and at the time, at 38 years of age, he's going to kill me for that too. He was like a kid in a candy store, because this is something he grew up with here in Port Huron all of his life. My son is Eric Beauchamp. I'm very proud of him.
Judy Blount, Port Huron Township. I got my little hockey player up a little late tonight, so I'm going to speak, and then I guess we'll take him home and get him ready for bed for a game tomorrow. We've heard, you know, from a lot of different people tonight, and from many people, even, you know, for the SC4, they've said they have choices. They have other areas they can proceed and go forward and develop, get rid of some of that slum over there, you know? No offense to anybody, but it's what it is. Port Huron Minor Hockey, as others have said, do not have any other place to go. We can't build another arena. Glacier Point, well, okay, we go to Glacier Point. Marysville's going to start getting the business, not Port Huron. And Glacier Point can't sustain the crowds, especially for Silver Sticks. I don't know if any of you have ever been to Silver Sticks, but it's pretty crowded downtown. You know, they have the Chili Fest going on during that time. Is all that going to disappear too, when Silver Sticks leaves? And, you know, people are saying, well, they can play in the main. What about the main? Okay, well, you got the Festival of Trees in December. You going to get rid of that? Because everybody plays hockey in December. You know, the choice really shouldn't be that hard. The college has other options to develop. Port Huron Minor Hockey is a big, big thing in this area. I'm from Montana. I have a friend that lives in Minnesota, and when I told him where I was moving to years ago, he said, oh, that's where Silver Sticks is, that's where, you know, the finals is, Port Huron. That's really cool. It's from Minnesota. You know? I mean, it shouldn't be that hard. Why do we have to get rid of one to help another? It shouldn't be that way. And if you get rid of the pavilion, minor hockey is going to go with it. You can think that it's not, and, oh, we can relocate. Relocate to where? I can't afford to take my kid to Mount Clements or Detroit. We like it here. You know, there's a camaraderie, it's a family. We go camping together. We go watch events together. Our kids do a lot of things together. You know, just, it shouldn't have to be one or the other. It really shouldn't. And I guess that's it. Go Flags! Woo!
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening under the public
My name's Danielle Hudson. I'm a resident of Port Huron. I have, I'm also an SC4 alumni. I went to SC4 in the 90s, and then with one degree, and then came back to continue my education in 2010. my education in 2010. Don't hurt me later. But I've also been a, I've been an active member of Port Huron Minor Hockey. I played in the '80s. That's where I played. That's where my husband played. And came back in 19, I'm sorry, came back in 2001 when my oldest son started playing. My twins, who were born in 2001, started playing there when they were three years old. In that time, I've coached, and I've also, currently, I'm running the Learn to Skate program, which is up in numbers. We have a lot more numbers than what we've had in the past. That being said, the one thing that I don't know if anyone's brought up, because I did have to leave and go pick up a child and come back, but what I'm wondering is when my oldest son, who just graduated from high school last year, when he was recruited by SC4, and he was recruited through a college event that they had at the high school, he was told repeatedly that they, SC4 could accommodate his schedule no matter what it was because of all of their online classes. So now my question would be to SC4, how many of those classes are going to online? Because during the fall, early fall, we were at SC4 for testing, and there were so many rooms empty. If there's so many rooms empty because so many classes are going to online classes, is it going to come? And we're talking about getting rid of the pavilion, taking it away from Port Huron Minor Hockey to give it to the college. Is it possible, if in their, you know, five, 10, 15-year plan, that the thought of people actually being in classrooms may, I don't want to say cease to exist, but maybe the numbers in in-room classes will be down? Will that make all of those buildings on campus obsolete? And if so, why not redo some of those buildings? Take out some of those buildings that are not being used? Add to those, that area that is already in existence? Other things that have gone on around the town, when you're talking, I mean, I never have, I've never heard somebody say, "Boy, there's just way too much parking in Port Huron. We're always having problems with parking, and we have changed an area into a bus depot, a large parking lot." That could have been a really, really nice gym facility. But there's so many other options. There's so many other areas. The decision has to be to keep hockey here in Port Huron. Business owners will agree that it has to have that Silver Stick tournament. There's just so many, there's no hurry. There's no rush. Let's take our time and develop other options. Try to find a way to make everybody happy. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening under public hearing? Number one. Or two, rather, I'm sorry.
Scott Warden, Port Huron, Michigan. I just want to say that this whole process, you guys have heard or tried to hear from me to try to get a voice for Port Huron Minor Hockey Association to be able to do that first presentation you just saw tonight. That's the first time, and all due respect, Blue Meets Green and the other guys in our community, for business owners, you never saw that presentation from the Port Huron Minor Hockey Association. So I do think it was a little early to make that kind of a decision, especially from a group like that that we're all engaged in, not to have us invited there to show you the different options and stuff that we wanted to do. McMorn Authority, Mark Neal, and the Authority members, the first thing that they got to do, we did a quick little presentation, was just drop off a quick financial plan. The consultant was not there to see it. We did not have any chance for any further negotiations ongoing. Always we were told that the independent consultant will do his due diligence, will evaluate it, and then come with a recommendation. However, it's very obvious, and we all know now, that there was ongoing discussions with SC4, with, with the independent consultant, negotiating and revising the evaluation of what the final view might be without any input from these guys. So I just want to say to you, city council members, you guys, it's up to you. This is about the kids. This is about a facility that is meant for an arena. It's also about a volunteer. When I say that, it actually is a tradition. It's an institution. Port Huron Minor Hockey Association in the city of Port Huron is an institution that has thousands of alumni. We're all tied together. We are business owners. We're leaders. We have, there's grandparents and there's grandkids. That's something that I feel was very disrespected in this process, that this is the first time they get to present their actual presentation, and there's already been quite a few recommendations out there. So I do want you guys to please, there's plenty of other options that we can discuss, we can look at. You saw three, four, five options there that came from the viewpoint from us to discuss that would be a win-win-win for the city, for the SC4, and for the hockey, for the kids to still have an ice rink. So I, it's pretty obvious that there's plenty of people here that already have discounted, and they don't really, they're already trying to replace the Silver Stick. So let's just get past that. Everybody's talked about Silver Stick. You already heard plenty that they don't care, they're going to try to replace it. So let's just, that's what it is. You guys, let's talk, get everybody together. Really, now, city council members, let's make sure that we all come to the table and talk about all options, all options, before we give that ice rink away. It is part of our community. There was over 50. I went over there Saturday morning, and I remember a couple, maybe a month or so ago, one of the city council members, Scott Mr. Farquhar, came up and said, invite you, all you guys, to go down and see the Learn to Skate. I just want to know if any of you guys have been down there on a Saturday? There's over 50 kids that are three years old to eight out there learning to skate. That's the future. That's not in the Port Huron Minor Hockey Association for the leagues. Those kids, that is a growth rate that is not going to be able to be sustained, but when we're just going to get this away, we need to talk about...
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council under public hearing number two?
Hi, my name is Jason Hills, from Clyde Township, actually. Longtime volunteer for Silver Stick, also a Port Huron Hockey Board member. I don't have a kid that plays hockey. The reason why I volunteered now is because somebody did it for me. They made me the man that I am now. We look at SC4's proposal here, you know, it's a page and a half. All this is, is what-ifs. I mean, do you think they're going to get a Division One men's basketball? There's no way. Ford Field barely even gets one. These numbers from Silver Stick and Port Huron Minor Hockey are here every year. They're here every year. They're guaranteed numbers, guaranteed numbers. These are all what-ifs. You know, there's no reason why, the college stated last week that if you did not give it to them, they would go on their own. They would build another facility. They would do things differently. They stated that themselves. So why are we so interested in subtracting something? I thought for a community to grow, we're supposed to add. So why get rid of something to some, to subtract something to something that they're going to add regardless? They're going to, they're going to do it if you give it to them or not. So it doesn't make sense to me to subtract something on a bunch of what-ifs on this paper. I mean, this is a pretty substantial plan here, and it's, there's no proof in this that they're even going to bring anybody. That's pretty much all. I mean, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council under public hearing number two?
My mayor, council, Michael Batchelor, from Port Huron, Michigan. You hear a lot of passion down here tonight, and I guess I'm always about the win-win-win. I think when it was proposed, the city, I think we failed to kind of think of how the city was going to benefit from this. I think getting it off the doles of the city is a good thing. But I think if we can get together, from what I've witnessed, and maybe try to think about maybe the proposals, two or three and four, or whatever, that were proposed for Minor Hockey, if we think of that building, it's not a warehouse or an abandoned building. That is a viable, vibrant building that's meant a lot to this community, obviously. And to just do away with it in a whim just doesn't, doesn't do well to our community. I know whenever you're going to vote on this, on that Monday, I know there's several communities that are waiting in bated breath that is, that are going to be drooling, that are hopeful to get what we've worked 50 years to have here in the community with, with Minor Hockey and what they've done with Silver Sticks. I know what's good for the community. I've been here all my life. I'm a hockey player, and it's true, we do have lifelong commitments through hockey. I'm one of them. Still play. So we can all debate the emotions here, but think about what Minor Hockey does for this town, and maybe we can come up with a win-win-win. I think that's what would, maybe we can't, but that's what I think we should all strive for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on public hearing number two? Go ahead, then.
Jim McPhee, Marine City. My address should be 701 McMorn Boulevard. I spend most of my time up here. I've been involved with Minor Hockey since my son joined in 1995. I got involved with the Board of Directors, I think, in 98. Been president for over 10 years. I've never played hockey. I've never ice skated, but I'm here for these kids. If my wife was here, she vouched that I spend more time up here than with her. That gets to be a little difficult. But anyways, what I got here that we acquired through the FOIA Act, three pieces of paper. One is the Brailsford and Dunlavy Impact Analysis that was presented to all the, to everybody, to the council and these other groups. And I have a second impact analysis that was originally done. The difference between the two, one shows, the one that you currently, that you have, that everybody has seen, shows in favor of the college. The other one is in favor of Minor Hockey. What I have is an email that states, first email was from Jason Thompson. "Mark, per the city manager's request, please find attached the impact analysis with the suggested changes to the numbers. Let me know if he or you need anything else or more changes." Mark to James Free. "James, here are the new numbers. What do you think?" Tell me what that is. We're trying to do an honest, I mean, we're youth hockey, and we're getting, we can't, we don't get to present, we're getting these things thrown at us. We're not getting an honest attempt. You're throwing youth hockey, you're putting, college is important, but this is youth hockey. Yes, we're offering $100,000. We'd rather keep it for youth hockey. We'd put it in the building. We're offering you different, different options. We'll team up with the city. Like they say, the college has got other options. It's got other locations. The, you know, I just don't understand. Silver Stick's been here, Silver Stick, it's not Silver Sticks, has been around. We've been here since the building was built. We've been here before the building was built. It kind of reminds me of the old movie where the railroad comes through and takes, kicks out the orphanage. We're getting railroaded. I have copies of this for the council and for the Times Herald, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. I assume that, as I asked before, no one else got up, that public comment is closed at this point on the public hearing? So I will declare it closed. We will move on with the agenda. The next item is public comment, but public comment meaning on anything else at this point, so if there's other subject matters other than what we've been discussing.
Hi, my name is Tim Sager. I'm a CWA Local 40-8. I'm the president. I represent all our AT&amp;T workers at 112 Grand River, right across the street here. I would ask anybody that's still here in red, that's with us, that's standing behind me right now, take, stand up, please. You know, listening to all your comments tonight about the college and hockey, we kind of feel like Silver Stick right now. I represent a group of people that have been in this community for decades. AT&amp;T has supplied many, many jobs for many, many years, right across the street here. At one time, five years ago, we had 500, 600 employees. Today, we have 111. The company's changing from phone to entertainment, and jobs are at a minimum. These people that are here tonight have been part of your community for a very long time. They are family. They do have kids, and they love Port Huron. Today, AT&amp;T made a comment and released a email stating that they plan on closing 112 Grand River, or relocating our 112 employees to another location. If you know anything about AT&amp;T like I do, I've worked 35 years, over 35 years for AT&amp;T. Compassion is not in their vocabulary. They live by a Bible called prophet. And if they thought and told us, as they have told these people, that their jobs are important, that they still have their jobs, that you still have a job to go to, except it's at 444 Michigan Avenue, downtown Detroit, round trip is 130 miles away, to keep their job, to pay their taxes, to live in the city of Port Huron, to still be that family. As we all sit here tonight, we're asking anyone, council, mayor, anyone that can reach out to this company of David and Goliath, which is what we're fighting right now, to keep those jobs in Port Huron, to keep those families and that tradition that they have here in your great city, to help our members. I know it's our fight, it's our battle, but we're asking you, as a city council, if you have anything other than just maybe walking down across the street and ask to see a manager and let him have what you, I can't say it, but let him have what you want to say to him. Because I know there's 111 people over there that are, that are great people who live in this great city, who are about to have their lives turned upside down, and we could use any help from anybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to talk to the council under public
Sharon Vender, city of Port Huron. I'm proud of it. Just wanting to thank the city of Port Huron. In particular, I'd like to thank our parks director, and I want to make sure that she understands that that comment was way before her time about the bathrooms at the park. I want to thank you for the allocation to get the streets started to be worked on on South Boulevard. In particular, I want to thank you for what's been done already in the parks. Weather hampered our efforts for Make a Difference Day, but things will happen next year, and actually, it may be better because hopefully North Boulevard will be done by that time, and it'll really, truly be a celebration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council under public comment? under public comment?
Hi, my name is Michelle Hill. I live in Fort Grasset. Graduated from Port Huron High School. I think with your son Andre. You're my mailman. It's been a long time. But I actually started at AT&amp;T when I was 18. I'm 45 now.
Could you give your name again?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Michelle Hill, from Fort Grasset.
Thank you.
So I have been there, it'll be 27 years in January. The company didn't tell us originally that they already had plans to move, and that they had dates to move us. Apparently, it wasn't quite as important to us as it apparently was to them, that we know this and can kind of decide for our families what we have to do. But something on top of the fact that we have been working here, I started in that building, exact same department I'm in today. So for 27 years, I'm walking those halls over there. But not only is it affecting us, but it is gonna affect Port Huron, because our company has asked us, all the years I've worked there, to contribute everywhere in Port Huron we can. We help Relay for Life, United Way. We do fundraisers at work, but anybody that comes in to do a fundraiser has to donate some kind of their profits to the community. We, every year, do backpacks for the kids for schools. You know, we've done endless, a year ago, probably about half of our office got our pay cut by about $800 a month. Still this year, time came up, and it's, you know, give to your community. $800 a month, at that point, I was about to ask to be the Christmas family, just for the record. But we did, you know, still this year, we have contributed to Christmas family. We've been donating money out of all of our paychecks, even though our paychecks have been cut substantially. We have been, just had meetings to go in and to contribute to the community through our paychecks, to give money out of our paychecks. We did backpacks this year for the kids. And then we've just found out that probably right before Christmas, we will either lose our jobs, or we will have to travel. So we definitely appreciate, you know, any help that you can give us, and actually, for your time today for listening to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council under public comment?
It's again Francis Hoffman, Greenwood Township, business owner downtown Port Huron. Promise, nothing about hockey. This is actually quite a petty matter compared to the urgent issues that are being discussed tonight. However, it's got to do with the, the new stamped concrete crosswalks that have been, have begun to be installed in Port Huron. The one that comes to mind is the one on the block where my building is, at the east corner of, you know, Main Street and Grand River, whereas they're replacing the real pavers with stamped concrete. That's what they've done. What's that about?
On the corner?
I'm sorry?
It's stamped concrete?
Yeah, they've replaced the original brick pavers with stamped concrete to look like brick pavers. However, it's, it's concrete, poor. The whole thing had been a botched deal in the first place. It came out on a 95-degree day with an excavator on tracks and tore up the road pretty serious, to rip up the old pavers. And then they replaced it with these, you know, concrete stamped deal, which is horribly unattractive. It, in addition to the damage that they did to the blacktop, the city crew, I believe, is, they came in and replaced a small portion of the blacktop, which was very heavily damaged. And then as a result of that, they damaged the new concrete, and they had to come back just this past week and repave it. Long story short, I would urge you guys, I'm not sure if you guys even make the decision, but moving forward, to get away from the stamped concrete look, it is unbefitting of the downtown Port Huron. It does not look real at all. And actually, the maintenance of the existing brick pavers is entirely possible, at a nominal cost. You know, to match the bricks, if necessary, you could excavate one intersection and replace it with new pavers, and use those old bricks to patch in the existing ones. You guys save a ton of money, and it would look much better. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council under public comment? I'll declare public comment closed. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Ashford. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. There's two items on the consent agenda, both ordinances, given their second and, second reading and enactment. One was Chapter 52 zoning, Article 3, for the purpose of rezoning, the property located at 223 O Catherine Street, from R1 zoning district, which is single and two-family, to C1 zoning, which is general business district. The other one is to amend Chapter 10 rental certification of the code of ordinances for the purpose of making various definition changes. And then we have one other ordinance tonight for its first reading. If the clerk would please read it.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 10 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 5 Rental Certification of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances for the Purpose of Including Blight Violation Notices in Sections 10-153 and 10-169.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, is there a discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I guess my question is probably for Mr. Haynes, is what are we gaining by this change?
Good evening, Mayor Rep and council. This is the addition of the blight notice violation language to basically provide consistent notifications within the rental certification. Because we've had more additions with the blight notices, this now is a part of that notification, both to the tenant and to the property owner.
So it'll, it'll do a better job of what we're currently doing?
More, exactly, but more consistent throughout the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Haynes while he's up there? Thank you. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. That concludes the regular part of the agenda. Couple of announcements. There's a ribbon-cutting ceremony will take place at Knox Park, October 28th, Wednesday, at 4:00 PM, to recognize the renovations of four new basketball courts in the city at Grasset Park, Knox Field, Lincoln Park, and Palmer Park. Also, just as a reminder, leaf pickup began this week, and everyone should have gotten a notice in the mail that says when their particular area is going to be picked up. If you didn't, you can either call Public Works at 984-9730, or the city clerk's office at 984-9725 for more information. Also, I'd like, it was brought up briefly, I would like to say thank you to all the volunteers for Make a Difference Day on Saturday, even though it was raining and they couldn't accomplish everything they wanted to accomplish. It certainly was heartwarming to see everybody out there. So I, I'd like to offer my congratulations to them for doing that and thank them. Is there anything else? Mr. Freed has something he'd like to respond to on the brick pavers.
Two things. First, I want to mention the AT&amp;T as well. Just to give you guys a quick, brief status update. We've heard rumors about the AT&amp;T relocation of those jobs for about two and a half to three weeks now. The only information we're getting are actually from the employees. It's been very difficult to get communications from AT&amp;T, to be quite frank. They're not very forthcoming at all. We've been checking what's called the Warren Act website. Whenever there's large layoffs, a company is required, I believe it's 50 or more, 30 or more employees, to post that they are laying off or terminating those jobs. But due to the fact that they are classified as relocation, they have not had a notify per the Warren Act. So we haven't been able to get that information through typical channels in which we would. Not only has my staff been following it, but we've also requested the St. Clair County Economic Development Alliance retention and attraction team as well has been following this. So there is a team approach, but I'm gonna be quite frank, AT&amp;T has not been very forthcoming. To be quite frank, this is the most information we've got tonight from the employees. If you could stick around afterwards to give me your contact information, I'd love to discuss with you what's been shared with you, if we get a copy of that email as well. As for the stamped concrete, what they're doing on Grand River, they removed the stamped concrete that was already there. Across Grand River on Huron is stamped concrete on the Grand Riverside, and on the Huron is actually the brick pavers. In-house, our DPW has actually been replacing bricks up and down the downtown. They've seen crews out there working, re-leveling. But we are only replacing what was already existing due to design cost. So the stamped concrete that they put in there on Grand River was already in there. There was no bricks crossing that section of Grand River. But you are correct in the fact that our backhoe did nick the corner of that stamped concrete that was repaired this week. The asphalt going into that concrete was going to be replaced anyways because of the slope issue and water pooling. So it wasn't the tracks, it was actually planned that that would be fixed. But you are correct, we did nick that corner, and we did fix this this week. But throughout on Huron Crossing, on McMorn as well, that paver crossing will be repaired with pavers. So we're just replacing everything that is because of design cost. The DEA had allocated $100,000 to those repairs. So that's how that happened.
Yes, Councilmember Ashford?
I'd like to ask Mr. Freed, I know you said AT&amp;T wasn't forthcoming with you with the information, and if they were forthcoming, what is the extent that we could do for them?
Our options are very limited, to be quite frank with you. It is a private company. They can relocate those jobs any given time they want. That facility has been on their radar for quite some time. We knew it was a vulnerable asset. Specifically, the lease there is coming up for renewal, I believe in December. We didn't think they'd act on that quite yet, so we knew it was a vulnerable site. It's been on our radar, specifically the DEA radar, for quite some time. Our planning director, David Haynes, used to be the attraction recruitment person for the DEA, and it was on his radar well beforehand. So our toolbox is limited. I want to be, I don't want to give you false hope. I wish AT&amp;T, before making that type of impactful decision about a community, I think it would be appropriate that they would reach out to us in some way. It's disappointing that our community has learned about it in this fashion, but we do appreciate, I appreciate you coming tonight and informing us, but that's where it's at, to be quite frank, very limited.
So case in point, we can't really do anything, just that we can't influence?
We can publicly shame and influence, but yeah, we can, we can try.
Yeah, I just don't want them to walk away. You know, I didn't want you to walk away because there's something else you have to do. They should know that, where you stand, you know, because we certainly don't want any jobs, you know, taken out of the city of Port Huron. But like the city manager said, you know, we are limited as to what we can do. So I got another question here. Okay, you know, it was mentioned that through all the, the public comment and stuff that we sit here through, and first of all, it was, I'm not trying to be the mayor or anything, but you know, it was meant for us to listen. That's what we had planned the whole time. We weren't gonna jump and try to make any decision. We wanted to hear what people had to say. You have to listen, and we were listening effectively. And we have a lot of papers that we have been getting in front of us. But I have a question tonight, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but when he did give us this, because things could be taken out of context, there's a whole lot, and it's a whole lot that we heard, and I think my colleagues heard, and it wasn't true, you know. It, it's another story to that. So I want you all to know that, you know, everything you heard wasn't just the way it is on, on either side. I don't know, you know, and I'm saying, it's no competition with me. I'm just looking for facts. That's, that's about it. And, and then you asked me at the end of the day, what's this about? I didn't hear anybody say anything about the city of Port Huron, the people that we served, that we got elected to do here. That's what we got elected for. This is the city of Port Huron. These are the taxpayers, okay? And there is something beyond that, you know, that we have to worry about. There are kids out there that are coming up, all kids, and there are jobs. I heard somebody mention jobs, you know, and that's what we're about, and that's what build communities, you know, in trying to prepare our workforce for tomorrow. So I, you know, I just, I, I just, I don't want to start talking about it because I don't want you, nobody trying to figure out where I'm going with this, but I just want you to know that, you know, what we do is not just in a bubble. We're, we're really looking at what we can do as far as what we've been elected to do about the taxpayers and, and the people that we're supposed to serve. A lot of people got here from a lot of different places and all this kind of stuff, and I appreciate that, too. You know, I was over there skating in my blue skates over at the, over at the arena, trying to learn how to skate. My daughter, she was, she was a hockey player. She was running around picking up people. I said, Tori, when you check people, leave them on the ground, will you? But what I'm telling, you know, we all got some skin in the game, and we all know that. But, you know, at the, again, at the end of the day, when it comes down to emotions, emotions, we can't afford to do that. We have to look deeper than that. We have to look down the road. You just, we just can't do that. At least, I don't want to think anybody do that. And then the opportunities that are there, just because one door's shut doesn't mean the other ones can't open. It can be that much better and greater. And I could see the energy in this room where it could have went, you know, putting that energy somewhere. And even, we talked about at the last meeting, trying to get a win-win, you know, how could that happen? And so that's what I wanted to ask you. I mean, we, you did have the discussion with that, in that round. Did you, or did you not?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. It's not like we haven't been doing anything, like we've been sitting here on our hands. You know, I'm tired of people looking at us like we don't do any, yeah, we are doing that. We're doing our best. That's the first thing we did. You know, how could they work together? How could you make this happen? You know, so I just wanted to, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but you, you know, you can answer me this tomorrow.
I'll, I'll, I'll.
You'll answer me now?
Yeah, I'll answer you now.
Okay, that's good.
During the process of data finding, and we were, we were subject to FOIA requests, we get them all the time, and so was McMorn Authority. When contacting legal counsel, there was questions of how limited in scope the data that the FOIA contained. But in the spirit of transparency, we turned over dozens of emails, any emails that could be any way associated with the process, I turned over. Even though that was, the FOIA was not that specific, we felt in the air of transparency, we gave them multiple drafts of the process. During the process, when the McMorn Authority was reviewing their cost assessments, there'd be adjustments for parking revenue in the different proposals, what would that would look like, utilities, labor cost, what would be fair. And if you look at the very end of the proposal, what the consultant actually came to, the cost differences between the two were the same. So there wasn't favoring one or changing numbers, so there was nothing nefarious going on there. And those emails are part of a broader FOIA package of much more emails. And so, and we do that in transparency. When you ask for an email, you can get any email in my inbox. We have nothing to hide, and we turned over more emails than were requested, but we wanted to make sure that there was no doubt. So there was numerous drafts. There was, each proposal, whether SC4 or the Hockey Association, they affected parking revenues differently. They affected labor costs differently, and projections in revenue. We had those discussions in the McMorn Authority Board meetings. And so those various drafts account for that. And I believe there's three or four various drafts, but all similar in the outcome in the end. So that's what justified that email. There was nothing nefarious going on. And if anything, the hundreds and hundreds of pages that were turned over per the FOIA, literally, I believe, close to 600 pages, if that was correct, 600 pages of documents were turned over. They did not, the FOIA was not that specific, but we broadened it because we wanted to be very transparent during the process.
Okay, and he is correct. This down here has draft across. Anything that costs draft, that's not final. So I just wanted.
If you ever want to email, read my emails, send me a FOIA. I'll gladly print them off.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashford. Is there any other comments from anyone else on council? I'd like a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Meeting adjourned.